Want to call into session, the Board Supervisors afternoon session for February 7th, 2017. There we have a little audio now. Thank those who've returned from the morning session and appreciate your patience. And we'll call the roll and then we'll go right into the agenda. And I know we have an off agenda address when we conclude the agenda is item following that as well. So Flo, you want to call the roll, please?
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a form.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, as we said we would, we're going to reshuffle this afternoon a bit. And we put over items 45 and 46, but we have other items that are scheduled. But we're going to take up item 46 as the first matter of order. And I don't know, Krista, or do you want Flo to call it in?
LeAnn will tell us.
Yeah, LeAnn, I just want to make sure we call it, we're going to call it, okay.
Item 46 is the Adams Residential Accessory Dwelling Appeal of the County Planning Commission, Approval of a Use Permit and Special Development Permit for a property located at 7130 Beach Avenue in the Orangevale community, and the environmental determination is exempt.
Okay, very good.
All right, so we did reach most of the Community Planning Advisory Council members, none of whom are available to come down to the hearing this afternoon. So we do have a decision to make about whether you want to move forward and hear the item.
So you have two choices, I think. First one would be if you want to simply summarily deny the appeal, I think you have grounds to do so because the CPAC was the appellant and they didn't show up. I think probably the better move is to go ahead and hear the item. You have people who've shown up, give them an opportunity to testify, but I think you can certainly take into account in your deliberations the fact that the CPAC didn't show up to present their case. But I would recommend going ahead and going forward since people have come down here today.
Okay. Thank you, Krista. And with that, Supervisor Frost, you're okay with proceeding that way?
Yes, everyone's been here all morning waiting and they deserve to have their voice.
I concur. Okay, with that then, LeAnn, if you'll do the PowerPoint and then we'll proceed. And we do have a number of speakers. So if anyone else, and did you say earlier this would be under oath though? So we'll need to swear people in? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Want to rise now?
Do you want to do it now?
I'll rise at one.
Yeah, so we can do, yeah. So, yeah, we could all rise and we'll go do that quickly, Flo and, yes.
If you wish to address the board about this item on the agenda, please stand to be sworn, raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, and when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and state the statement, "I have been sworn."
Okay. Thank you all for, again, for standing to be in sworn. And with that, we'll turn to LeAnn for the staff report, and then we'll proceed to the discussion and public testimony.
All right, so the topic at hand is residential accessory dwelling unit and accessory structures located at 7130 Beach Avenue. This is 1,000 feet north of Elm in the Orangevale community. It is shown in red in the center of the map, a bit hard to see on the screen, but it's dead center over there on that graphic. The item before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the use permit and special development permit to establish a residential accessory dwelling and garage in the AR-1, 1-acre ag rez zone. The Community Planning Advisory Council has appealed the decision of the Planning Commission, and their expressed concerns were on the height of the structure and the size, overall size. The CPAC met back on October 4th of 2016. There were three immediate neighbors who spoke in opposition to the project. I do want to note, there was also one additional community member who spoke in opposition. So there were actually four speakers opposed, three of whom were immediate neighbors, expressing concerns about loss of privacy due to height and window location. The windows is not on the slide, but I wanted to point that out as well. The CPAC voted to recommend denial of the item on a four to one vote. This is typically an item that's heard by the zoning administrator, but because the CPAC recommended denial, it automatically bumped to the Planning Commission and went directly to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission heard the item and recommended, and actually approved the item on a five to zero vote. And then the CPAC followed that up within the requisite period and appealed the Planning Commission's approval and filed that appeal on January 18th, which is why we're here today. The requested entitlements are a use permit for a 1,200 square foot residential accessory dwelling. 6100 square foot accessory dwelling is allowed by right in the zone, and you are allowed to go up to 1,200 square feet with a use permit. And we do get a fair number of these types of applications in ag rez zones. There's also a special development permit to deviate from the maximum allowed height. And I'm going to be showing you some graphics of the structure so you can see the height item. And a special development permit to deviate from the maximum total combined square footage of accessory structures on the project site. The 1,200 square foot accessory dwelling unit will be a second story that's constructed on top of a 1,200 square foot garage and 750 square foot RV garage. The total height of the overall structure is 22 feet 4 inches. There's a prescribed method for measuring height in the zoning code. The structure does exceed the setbacks from the zoning district, so the rear yard property line from the edge of the new structure to the property behind it is about 43 feet if it were approved and built. And there is elevation change where the structure is proposed. So here's the site layout. On the left of this graphic here is the street. And the existing home is built a little bit more than halfway back from the street. And the darker outline lines here are the existing and new accessory structures, combination of garages and the new residential accessory structure. And there are, I believe, three properties that are served by that private drive, which is what's shown on the bottom of this graphic. So there's a home to the south and on the right side of this line, there's another home served off that private drive. These are the elevations of the structure. On the upper left is a side elevation looking from the inside of the Adams, the Adams are the folks who are building this. This is from their yard. So those windows there look out on the yard, and you can sort of see how the elevation change happens with the existing garage being at the current elevation. And then they would drive around back to the rear and park under with the residential accessory dwelling essentially at the same elevation as the original garage. So the elevation on the upper right shows the backside of this from the rear of their yard with the larger RV garage on the left, the regular parking garage below, and the windows of the residential accessory structure above that. And then on bottom is the elevation that faces the private drive and that neighbor across the private drive.
A quick question while you have that there. So then, the elevation, you said the one on our right is what faces the neighbors to the east?
Yes.
So the garage doors, or is it the one with the windows and the standard person door? Which one of those?
The one on the upper right?
Yes.
Is facing away from the street. And that's what faces the wood fence that I'm going to show you in a minute in a photo, and the neighbor at the end of the private drive.
Okay, so that's what, that faces to the east, that elevation?
Yes, and that elevation would be approximately 43 feet to the fence line.
Okay.
The elevation on the upper right.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
And I had two questions. On this appeal, is there a rationale that, or is there a required rationale that a CPAC must have in order to appeal a decision that the Planning Commission makes?
Yes. So the board has authorized Community Planning Advisory Councils to have essentially taxpayer-funded free appeals. And they are required to make a finding of community-wide interest. They did make that finding when they took their vote back in October. They did declare that this accessory structure was of community-wide interest due to its height and size.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, it was 43 feet setback on the back of the unit to the other property, but what about on the side? Did they exceed the setback on the side as well?
They do exceed the setback on the side. I'll have to check in a minute. I don't have that numeric.
I was just curious.
Memorized, but we can get it in the.
So do you think 43 feet is about from the distance of that back wall to this dais? What do you think 43 feet looks like? I'm trying to figure that out.
Well, if you, these are relatively large lots. This is 1-acre zoning. If you think of a standard subdivision-type lot, that might be 50 by 100, 50 feet wide would be a typical RD5 urban lot. So this is 43 feet as compares to a typical urban 50 by 100 size RD5 lot.
Okay, thanks.
If that helps you imagine it out in a subdivision.
Just one follow-on question if I could then, is on a previous slide, but my question is on the shared driveway. Was that a condition of some previous land division entitlement that that was agreed upon, obviously, at some point in time? Was that some previous entitlement?
I presume. I don't know the history of the creation of the lots.
You have three homes, you said, that are served off of?
I believe there's three homes. Yeah, at least three. I think that there's three.
Okay, thanks.
These are some photos of the site. The, I'm going to start with the photo on the right. That's actually taken looking back towards the street with the neighbor at the end of the private drive behind you. So that's looking on the right-hand side, basically where you'll see that elevation with the doors and the windows above it. And then the photo on the left is looking away from the private drive, so the private drive would sort of be behind you, looking into their yard. The photo on the left is now that existing garage is now behind you, and now you're looking at the wooden fence and the neighbor at the end of the private drive. And then the photo on the right is looking at the rear of the existing residence with that garage slightly visible over on the left.
So while you're there, the photo on the left, if the building would be constructed that's being asked for here, what would be kind of looking into the foreground there? Where would that building edge be? And then you'd be at a, standing at 16-foot in the windows? Where would that be?
Yeah, well, you're probably standing where the structure's going to be built. I don't know how to tell you what exactly 43 feet is on this photo.
But so there's a disturbed area here? Is that roughly the edge of the garage, RV?
I think the disturbed area represents both where the new structure would be, as well as, it looks like it's disturbed all the way to the fence line. So I think some of that would still be within the 43 feet, if you're talking about the photo on the left.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some sense about where the party was that took the photo. And you're looking, trying to get, you know, question Supervisor Frost to ask about distance-wise to kind of gauge that. Obviously, we're going to hear something from folks today about that, I trust, so, okay. Thank you.
This is an aerial of the vicinity. See that? With the outline of the site, with the street on the left. The private drive is at the bottom of the yellow box outlined there. And the neighbors' homes are shown there. The Planning Commission ended up approving the entitlements. And the staff recommendation before you is to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval. We believe that the setbacks are sufficient and they exceed the minimum required setbacks. We have, our recommended finding is that there's no significant impact as a result of the requested additional height, in part due to that 43-foot setback, as well as because of the slope on the property. We believe that the findings for the special development permit can be made and that the development is consistent with the surrounding area.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
Can we go back to the elevations that show the, yeah, is that the actual, how that property's, is there a picture with the elevations showing both of the properties? Does the new unit go higher than the existing house, or is it lower, or how does that?
Yeah. The new unit, I believe, if you look at the upper left there, you can see the existing garage to the right of that portion. And so the new structure is approximately the same height as the existing garage. That's what's shown in these elevations.
And that's just being dug into the hill and added to that unit that we saw in the picture, basically?
Yes.
Okay. But how does, and how is that in comparison to the other house in front?
I believe the height of the other house is the same height, general height, as the garage. So they're all, from the front, all essentially the same height. There has been, I think you're going to hear some testimony from the neighbors about concerns about runoff. And I did want to point out that our water resources staff have received those concerns and they have, they had through the process, applied a condition number four, that the applicant has to provide a grading plan showing proposed and existing conditions regarding site grading and mitigation of any impacts. The purpose of this plan is to identify any impacts to neighboring properties due to past or future grading and to mitigate those impacts. So our water resources staff is aware of neighbor concerns about that and would intend to look into that as part of the subsequent pro, permitting, building permitting and site improvement process.
One follow-on question while you have that exhibit up there. So the orientation of the garage and RV entryways is oriented towards the east, if I follow this correctly?
Yes.
The road comes in east to west, and I guess you have to, on the property, would have to make a turn to get into this. Why wouldn't your garage doors be oriented towards the, towards the south, towards the entryway to the private drive, private road?
Well, I'm speculating, I'm guessing that they probably want enough turnaround, and maybe the applicant can address this for their RV, rather than trying to maneuver it off the private drive. But perhaps the applicant can describe their intent there.
And then how close is the, does that house on the south side, does it orient towards the private drive as well? The aerial doesn't give me a very clear depiction of that.
You know, I do not know which way it leans.
Because I'm just getting, that might just put it in front of somebody else's house. I just, I'm curious. I, again, having not visited the site, but I see, although it may, it may be, because there are accessory structures on the property on the south, I see the home and obviously the pool, it looks like another outbuilding.
I'm not sure which side is their front door. I guess I would speculate maybe because the street, but I can't answer that definitively.
But you're saying that the orientation then may be due to, rather than have to make a tight turn, is to make a more.
That way they have their 43 feet back there, rather than relying on the private drive.
Okay. And then just one other question, again, there are folks in the audience, I'm sure that can answer this, but maybe you, LeAnn, the orientation in, to the east, where, is that in the front of the house? I take it for the property that lies to the east, which I know the folks are here, but I just, so.
Right. You know, I'm not sure. I did see some pictures of a patio area that had some sort of muddy water in it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where the front door is.
Trying to get some sense. That didn't really show me the, I'm just trying to get some sense about orientation. I mean, a lot of times, we've had discussion over the years, not necessarily specific to this particular community, but of orientation of second-story windows to existing residences and so forth. And this will be, you know, even though it's a secondary accessory, you know, it could be somebody's primary dwelling, I take it. And so it'll be occupied, and those windows will look out, distance-wise or not, they have an elevation that, you know, goes, looks that way. I see some tree coverage and so forth. But I'm just trying to get some sense of how that lays out on the site.
Yeah. The best photo we have is the photo on the left there. But it's hard for me to tell from that photo where their front door is.
I trust we'll get some testimony along those lines. So let me ask any other members of the board, any questions of LeAnn or staff at this juncture? All right.
I'm going to go ahead and leave the aerial up.
Sure, that'll be helpful.
And that might be helpful as people testify.
Let me ask, Krista, I don't have a sign of she from Mr., I guess it's Mr. Adams, but I have five who either say they're opposed or one neutral. So in this case, the appellant was the CPAC who's not present. We have the applicant, whose application, so would they?
Why don't you call the neighbors in place of the CPAC?
Okay, all right, that's fine. I always want to make sure we keep this in proper order. And so I trust, Mr. Adams, you may want to speak to this at some point. But, okay, let me call the neighbors. I'll have these in the way they were handed to me. I have Brett McCab, followed by Debbie Kirkwood, followed by John Kirkwood, followed by Greg Gilbert, followed by Vicky Gilbert. That was the order I had them. So if you had any particular order you wanted to come, you're welcome to, and I'll give you each three minutes. Okay? Just identify yourself, tell us you've been sworn, please.
My name is John Kirkwood. I'm the house in the back.
Okay, John.
7126. I'm being sworn in.
Thanks, John. Okay.
The grading of the, if we can go to the picture of where the fence is.
Okay, maybe we can hold a second. Can we pull that up? She needs a magic wand. That one there? John?
All that dirt down there by the fence has been raised. He did all that before he applied for his permit. He took down his hillside and pushed it up against the property line, caused flooding in my back, in my front yard. And Brett, my neighbor, his septic tank's getting flooded out. He's had to have it pumped out. And he has, he used core samples for concrete for his wall, which is, shouldn't be used anyway. It's over four feet high in most plots. The wall is leaning into my property. I have excessive water coming through the core samples. And my water line runs along the easement where he's plans on driving his motorhome over it. He's already broken my water line once. If he does go, if the building does go proof, I want my water line to be moved to the other side so it doesn't get damaged anymore. And straight from the street back, no curves and bends in it, so it leaves my pressure going. He's encroaching in on the easement. The excess traffic that's going to be going through there, his motorhome is 36 feet long, I believe, and the space between my house and where he plans on parking it is 43 feet. So that's going to be shining right into my living room. I have all those trees. I'm worried about them killing off my trees. I have oak trees up there. I got my redwoods and stuff. My tortoise is flooded out. He lives on an island now because of all of what he's been doing. He has disregard for all the neighbors. He just went ahead and did all this movement of the dirt and caused havoc to our, to the neighbors. I don't want the building to go in because it's going to encroach into my, why I bought a single family home on 1 acre. It's zoned for one house. It's what I bought it for. And he plans on making it into an apartment. Because if, once his father dies, he's going to rent it out. That's what happens to those. He doesn't take care of his easement before. He's had a BMX track out front, had it go on for, you know, you'd have 100 people over there, and blocked the easement. I can't get, I had to call the cops out for getting into my property because he blocks the easement. He's never taken care of the road.
John, let me just ask you if I could. So I asked about it earlier, and again, John, let me just ask you if I could, so, I asked about it earlier, and again, there may be, you know, different views on this, but, so what, again, it's a shared easement, is there a road, is there a road agreement to...
There's a chip and seal road, it was at the beginning, before he moved in. Once he moved in, it's deteriorated. I resealed my half, but it, now he has excess traffic on that, so now it's deteriorating.
So the, so there is a road agreement, but, attached to your deeds then, is that...
Yeah, it is attached to our deeds, even though they keep on telling me it's not my road. It's...
Okay. So, shared access and shared maintenance, at least, as per the agreement, I guess that may be in dispute.
And the house on the south side, his driveway puts it right up to the easement. It's, his car's sort of parked on the easement, because that's where the garage is.
Okay. Can I just ask you one other question, then? With the drainage, again, I don't know how long you lived there, and you know...
Since 96.
Okay, so, we've had at least one other rainy period since the time you lived there, so...
Oh, I haven't had any flooding.
I was going to ask you if you had any...
None.
Okay.
I built, I landscaped it so I wouldn't have any flooding. Now, it's, all the work I put into it, doesn't work anymore.
So did you, is that a good neighbor fence, or is that fence...
He built the fence. I had a chain-link fence up there.
And faced, all the boards are facing in towards Mr. Adams's property?
Yes.
Versus, okay. Did you talk about sharing in the cost of building that fence, or you didn't?
Oh, no, it's on his property.
All right. I don't know. Any other questions of Mr. Kirkwood? Okay. Okay, John. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Done, again, in any order you wish, should I say, I have Brent and Debbie, Greg and Vicky, so. Just come forward, just identify yourself, I'll let you kind of decide what order you want to go in.
My name's Debbie Kirkwood.
Hi Debbie.
And I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
So my husband and I, John Kirkwood and I, have lived there for 22 years. We bought that purposely to raise our children, and because we've grown up in Orangeville. We've been community members for 35 years. This serene area that we have is perfect setting. We have parcel two, Adams parcel one. They've never cooperated with what we needed, from a three-parcel property with the easement route. But my main concern is apartment. It's, the magnitude of apartment will look straight into my bedroom and living room. They think the trees will stop it, but currently, every day, they look at me in my driveway. They watch me drive down. They watch me at the mailbox. They do it because they want their way. Orangeville is not set up for apartments in a backyard. The noise, the pollution, for him to turn around a RV, it will interfere with our horses, the chicken coop, my dogs, the cats, the goats. We raise farm animals. We don't want apartment. Yes, I feel bad that his father-in-law is in poor health and needs to live with them, to be taken care of. Currently, they have like a six-bedroom house. They already have a two, three-car garage, they're already putting cars in the backyard. So I know we'll have heavy traffic. I know it'll be noisy, it'll be, the environment will be ruined with a peaceful, serene Orangeville property. And I beg that this doesn't happen. Thank you for your listening and your cooperation.
Thank you Debbie. Okay, next, either the Gilberts or Mr. McCab, McHale.
Hi, my name is Vicky Gilbert. I've been sworn in.
Thanks.
We live, if, if you could put it back to the aerial picture?
Okay.
Please?
Sure.
We live in Kildee Court. If you notice, it's the little street that runs from right, right across beach, smack dabbing to their property. What you see at the front, the whole half of that property, is the dirt bike. Ramps, jumps, hills, everything. We've tried to be good neighbors. Their kids ride those dirt bikes out there in the summer. The exhaust, the dust, makes the air almost unbreathable. We feel ve- or I feel very strongly that in adding the back half of the property, I don't believe, I'm an RN, I know what Graves' disease is, that they're claiming is the reason for the father-in-law. It's a hyperactive thyroid. Most of us would love to have a hyperactive thyroid, right? What they're proposing to build is much bigger than the original structure, which was 25,000 feet.
2,500.
I mean, 2,500, that's correct. Also, they, they are notorious for having big dirt bike parties, where we, there are multiple campers, RVs and all, covering the entire back half of the property, and they'll spend long weekends, three-day weekends, with, as, as the gentleman said before, it looks like hundreds of people there, doing the dirt bike races, which destroys everything peaceful and calm about the reason we pay extra for one acre lots in Orangeville. I do not believe that he will use the property as he's stating and intending. He is, they are very aggressive neighbors. I've been warned by all the neighbors on my court and in theirs, not to come testify, because they're very vengeful. And that's why there's not as many people here. Each, each meeting, they've decreased. And not to mention the fact that the poor people behind them will have absolutely no privacy whatsoever.
Well, thank you Vicky for sharing. Okay, so, this, Brent or Greg?
Yes, this is Greg. I'm Gregory Gilbert. I've been sworn. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm an attorney, so I know that, I wanted to mention that. I was going to ask specifically, since this appeal was made by the...
CPAC.
CPAC, but it's Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council. Here we go. It was not pursued by some of other of us. So I appreciate the county council's request that we allow our people to talk, but I have a special request. I request that the case be continued, and I have a good reason for it. You see, we would like to submit a brief on why this is an illegal use, not just an inappropriate use. If you go back to the section, maybe I can do it, that shows the property, whoops, there we go. There are three, basically, the first two on the left, it's not very zoomed in, I'd unwear if you can't. But the first two buildings are the, from the back of the house, in other words, going from left to right, going away from the beach. The first two buildings are existing. There's a garage and a so-called rec room. Okay? They are existing. But if you add up the amount of square feet that he's planning on adding to it, it's 3,150 square feet. And most of, and of course, it goes up to 36 feet. That is hardly the exemption that was intended when the plans, planners allowed for a 1,200 square foot annex for someone like the so-called needy father, who I have no, no qualms with. I'm 70 also, so, you know, if I were in bad health, I'd like to have somebody put something up. But what they wouldn't do, and why you know this is so disingenuous, is because what they're building has two bathrooms, has a rec room, and most importantly, has a number of added garages. Now, why is that important? Because you see, these people work with motorcycles and dirt bikes all the time, the disabled father is out there working on cars, they're turning this into a little, I guess you'd call it a gaming area, and if they were quiet, and they didn't do that so noisily before, I probably wouldn't be so sure that they're going to do it again. Why does a disabled person need almost 2,000 square feet of garage, when they already have over 600, almost 700 square feet of garage? All this garage is, now you have to understand one other thing. Looking at those maps doesn't tell you what the ground is like. This is the only knoll in all of Orangeville. This is a line, it's the highest part of Orangeville, and what they're doing is they, they're coming into a very low-density environment, and they're trying to put a high-density use into it, so that they can look out on all the other people who are low-density. And frankly, it's selfish, and that's okay, I understand selfishness, but the point is that that's not what this was zoned for. So my request for continuance is for you to send it back to the planning department, because you, you jumped by that with this appeal. And if you send it back, and you ask the county council to give you an opinion, and to have the county council opine as to whether or not this is within the law as written, then you'll find out that 3,150 square feet is always more than 1,200.
Okay.
And then, finally, I appreciate your time, but I'd like to say that I have seen the dirt brought in there. This family does not play according to the rules. They have a fence that they built out of concrete testing cylinders. I used to test them for the Army Corps of Engineers. And those testing cylinders are inherently A, porous going through the stacking, and B, they're always dangerous. And they don't, they're not only dangerous because they tend to move, they're dangerous because they crumble. That's why they're test cylinders. So he took test cylinders, brought them up to this side, and then brought in a whole bunch of dirt. And then he comes to the county council, county planning, and says, isn't it nice I have this disturbed area? So I would ask that you continue, because obviously, something happened with the community council, and I would ask that you refer it to the county council, so that they could opine as to whether or not it's legal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Greg. Okay, Mr. McHale? Is it Brent?
Brent.
We had to leave, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, he had to leave, okay. All right, that's, was anyone else wish to testify on this, better? Okay, Mr. Adams? Fill out ways when you're done, please, so...
Well, the last two people that spoke, I don't think they're really my neighbors, because I own no dirt bikes.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Greg Adams.
Tell us your, tell us you've been sworn.
I've been sworn in. The last two people to speak, they're lying. I don't own dirt bikes. Dirt bikes don't get used in my front yard. Bicycles get ridden out there. Which my lovely neighbors have called the county on me multiple times, and the county's come out and done all sorts of investigations, research, yada, 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 and found that there's no county code about riding bicycles on your own property. What I do with my property is really my business. Their house sits way, way down below that fence, so the argument of headlights and exhaust and dust, that's a great argument, but let's remember, they drive past my house multiple times every single day. Am I not affected by their exhaust and dust and fumes? The reason why I don't have the garage doors facing the driveway is because I want privacy from them. That's the same reason why I built a fence this summer, was to get away from these people. They call the sheriffs on me once a month. I have a different county organization at my house two to three times a year. So really, this has been drawn out by them harassing me, basically. The CPAC I knew was going to vote it down from the get-go, because I did enough research on the CPAC to know how that was going to go. And then the CPAC wastes everybody's time here, and they don't show up for their own appeal? I am within the county guidelines of what I'm doing. That's why the planning department approved it. The water line that they speak of, it was there when the original homeowner put it in. I wasn't even home when it broke. So this little idea that he has in his head, that I've damaged his water line, didn't happen. You don't like where your water line is? Move it. Not my problem. Shouldn't be on my property in the first place. And these test cores walls, walls they're talking about, just about everybody in Orangeville has retaining walls built out of this material. And those walls were there long before I was there, and long before the people behind me were there. So I don't really understand why this issue keeps getting brought up. And yes, I did move dirt, but you don't need a permit to move under 300 cubic yards of dirt, and they didn't measure it, they don't know what I moved. And again, most of that dirt was moved because I had a call from a county, the county came out, because they called on me, because I had rubble in my backyard. Well, when I started moving all the rubble to get rid of it, I found out that everything was built on rubble, and that's why it was all moved. So, I, I think that this appeal needs to be denied. I think this is absolutely absurd that it's gone on this long. I, I applied for this seven months ago. This is a good project. I, I'm a cash dealer, I'm not going to, I'm not getting a loan from anybody. This is all cash money on the table, the county comes out ahead, you guys get taxes. I'm not encroaching upon anybody's anything down here.
Okay.
Have any questions?
I just have one question for you. So, on the road easement, is there a maintenance agreement that...
There's a road maintenance agreement that all three homeowners have to agree and split the cost to improve, to do anything to the road. Well, the road is owned by me and the other neighbor across from me. We own the entire driveway. And they have an easement to pass and use.
The fee title's held by the two, the northern, southern property owners and the ability to pass.
They have a right to pass on it, but they've conjured it up in their minds that they own that road, because they get to pass on it. So, again, I'm using my own driveway to access my own backyard. I didn't know I was only buying a half a lot when I bought my lot. I didn't know that when I bought in Orangeville, that it was going to take seven months to get a building permit approved to do anything. You know, people buy lots in this area so they can have large buildings. The one man that left, Brent, he's got a 3,000-square-foot, two-story barn in his yard that I stare at. He's worried about me looking at his windows. I got bad news for him. I can see his windows from every room of my house currently. I'm not looking at his windows. I want a big garage. I have multiple cars, I want to be able to park my cars, my motorhome, in a garage. I'm building a two-bedroom, two-bath house, because I don't have any spare bedrooms. I have a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house. Neighbors have it conjured up in their heads, that I'm building an apartment complex, bed and breakfast, and I'm going to have eight rooms and 14 bathrooms, as they said at the last meeting. It's not the case. It's just not. You know, I'm tired of being slandered, I'm tired of the neighbors having this forum to come in here and talk about me, and not talk about the issues of this building.
All right, thank you. Answer my question. Okay, Supervisor Frost, did you have a question for Mr. Adams?
I have a question for Leanne.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams.
So I, I heard some comments regarding high density, and my understanding is, high density is five units or more, or more than that. Can you define high density? Because I don't think this is high density.
Sure. Our general plan defines high density as typically 13 units to the acre or more. So this would be two units on one acre. Furthermore, state law encourages, in general, conceptually, the construction of residential accessory dwelling units. Our, our general plan and our zoning code also therefore have provisions for these. It is a discretionary use permit, so, you know, typically, most go to the zoning administrator. They are allowed, with no use permit, at 600 square feet or less. If you want to go between 600 square feet and 1,200 square feet, you need this zoning administrator use permit. In this case, because of the controversy, it's made its way all the way to the board. It's pretty common in a lot of the agres areas, for a lot of properties to come in and request these, because they are larger in size. So, we probably get a lot more use permit requests in AR1 and AR2 zoning than we would on an RD5, 50 by 100 square foot lot, just because it's a lot harder to, you know, fit something onto a lot and meet the parking and setbacks and all that. So, you know, it can be denied, but we do typically approve, in fact, as staff, we tried to go back and think about the times that we've seen a residential accessory dwelling unit denied. And we actually could not think of one that had been denied. There was one that staff recommended denial of initially, because there had been a marijuana grow on the property, and we had a lot of concerns about the fact that the house and the unit were being housed by people associated with a marijuana grow. Ultimately, that all got cleaned up and went away, the CPAC, a different CPAC recommended approval, and that one was ultimately approved. But it is fairly rare, particularly on these large lot sizes, that one is denied.
Okay, and then, there was mention of the cement wall and all these other things, the fence, were those even part of the project? Are those part of the project?
They're not part of the project, so I don't think staff did any particular evaluation of any of the fencing.
That someone mentioned a wall that was leaning, or a fence that was leaning, I don't, that wasn't part of this proposal?
That was not specifically part of our analysis. We were really focused on the, you know, whether... We were really focused on the, you know, whether the design, the height. I mean, the height is certainly, I do want to, you know, adding to what I said before, oftentimes, the residential accessory dwelling units are a single story. So the height certainly is more unique to this one than in other circumstances. But we did not evaluate the walls or the other component. We do have the condition, because of a lot of complaints about the drainage, for Water Resources to look into what's going on with runoff and drainage there.
If I could, just a follow-on question on that. Because I certainly heard testimony from both Mr. Adams as well as from a couple of neighbors relative to the grading. You're saying prior to issuance of a building permit, provide Department of Water Resources a grading plan showing proposed and existing conditions regarding site grading and so forth. I get the sense that obviously there's some difference. Maybe you said somebody from Water Resources went out there, I know, obviously there's been some folks have been out there or timed. So what is it that's gonna be required to be provided to the county as a part of that? I mean, again, I understand, you know, we're not gonna patch up things between the neighbors, but I think, you know, in good faith and obligation and the condition that we put on any entitlement, and this does require a use permit and a special development permit, so it's properly before this hearing body based upon the appeal. But I guess I'm curious as to what's that gonna entail? Because I heard right here where some of those differences are about work that's been done that may not be related, or may be related to what's being contemplated but hasn't yet been approved. So where does that?
Yeah, I'm not sure that Water Resources staff has actually done an onsite visit yet, but certainly because of neighbors' concerns, it seemed warranted that before we issued the building permit, that we do get improvement plans and that we look at that in more detail to make sure that the property owner in the past or in the future does not alter the flow of drainage and isn't causing any undue additional drainage onto any adjacent properties, and that seemed very reasonable to do.
And that will be enforced prior to issuance of a building permit?
Yes.
Because this is what it says here, is that, and to mitigate those impacts. Now, it sounds like there may be some question about what those impacts are, or how they got there, or who's responsible for them. But I think irrespective of what we do here today, that, but in particular, if this is approved, that's a condition, and I think there needs to be an understanding for everybody involved, Mr. Adams, but also the joining neighbors who believe there are impacts and have sent, you know, photos at least describing what they believe is the impact of their property. I don't know you're gonna put Water Resources in the middle of all that, but it's gonna be prior to issuance of a building permit. And if in fact, I think Mr. Adams' testimony is something in the effect that, you know, you can't tell if I moved 300 yards of dirt or not, and, you know, so what? Well, somebody's gonna ask that, so what? So I just want to say that, you know, my understanding, if we take action to approve, that's what we do, that condition needs to be met, and it needs to be serious. And I think wet water resources and building inspection, and certainly your office, Supervisor Frost, who may, you know, get called in on this as well, to identify those impacts. And that's, you know, that may be atypical, but the entitlement that's requested before us is now gonna have that as a condition, at least as it came from the commission. So I just want to be clear. I mean, that's what's stated here, but that, you know, it's not just a matter of somebody taking somebody's word, and somebody needs to go out and do, you know, do the site inspection and so forth. That's my view of it, anyway.
All right.
Okay. I don't know, other questions or comments from board members here? Ms. Frost, turn to you.
If there's no other comments from my fellow board members, I'm going to, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I sympathize with this situation that you have with the neighbors. And I understand what it's like to live next door to someone and they're doing something that isn't necessarily what I wanted next door to me. And I've had experiences like that where I've had to try to figure out how to mitigate that situation and make my environment more comfortable. So I sympathize with that. I'm going to go ahead and move to support the planning commission's and uphold the planning commission's decision. In part, I'm doing that because the appellant is not here today to even to state their case. But also, the project appears to comply with what the county plans are and ordinances and state regulation. And I just can't see a reason, I can't see any overall extenuating reason to deny it. So at this time, given that Planning Commission will ensure that the drainage is in order and that the conditions that they've stipulated are met, I move to uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
And just to clarify, and to deny the CPAC appeal?
Well, yes, yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Does that include the conditions that were placed by the commission?
The original, originally, there were a couple of conditions that the Planning Commission laid out. It was ensuring that the drainage was, addressing the drainage, the turning radius of the recreational vehicle needs to be met without crossing property lines. And whatever other conditions that the Planning Commission set forth, if I missed anything, I'm not sure.
There were four conditions. They added two at the commission, and there were two previous ones to your point. So those are all included in the motion? Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right, thank you all for being with us today. And that takes care of that item. All right, let's call the next item, please.
Are we gonna go ahead and take item 45 from the morning?
We can go ahead and take, let's take, we have folks from the Sheriff's Department, let's take item 47.
47, okay.
Yeah. And then we'll come back to, 47 and 48. I think 45's gonna require some board input, not to delay it, but let's, since we did continue that, let's take the items that were timed for this afternoon. We'll come back to 45, so, sorry to Brent and to Troy, but we'll hold on that for a moment. So let's go to item 47, please.
Okay, item 47, approval of staffing plan and operating cost statement and RCCC life cycle cost analysis for the Rio Consumers Correctional Center SB 1022 new construction project.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Darren Green, I'm captain with the Sheriff's Department and the current commander of the Rio Consumers Correctional Center.
Darren, good to see you.
What I'd like to do is kind of give you an overview of the project, and then we'll get into the staffing numbers, so it gives you a better idea of what the layout is. So the background on this project is that $80 million was awarded from Senate Bill 1022 by the California Board of State and Community Corrections with a 10% match, which is 8.8 million by the county. And the timeline on this project has changed continuously, and it's probably going to continue changing, just to the nature of the work. But current projections right now are that the construction will actually begin November of 2017, with the completion date of September of 2019, and then occupy it November of 2019. Again, those are very fluid, so that can change as well. So the scope of the project is replacement of the mail booking with a new intake release building with a central command. Replacement of the underside kitchen with a new cook chill kitchen, which is designed to supply meals for both the main jail and the correctional center. And then a replacement of the old antiquated laundry facility with a new, larger facility. And a much-needed warehouse on the premise, which will be a cost savings of about $250,000 a year from the off-site warehouse that we're using currently. Construction of the new two-part medical and mental health facility, which will give us an additional 26 special-use beds. And just to kind of an overview of our old, current medical facility right now. In addition, just the nature of this award, it's gonna give us additional educational classrooms to go along with the programs that we have out there right now. And then a new, much-needed employee parking lot, which will put it on the actual exterior of the security perimeter fencing, which is, you know, more of a modern design where it should have been. And a new entry point for staff and delivery. So currently, all staff and deliveries are coming through the same gate, which is causing a problem for us, too. So there's kind of a map of the overview of, the coloring shows the indication of where the new facilities are gonna be built in relation to what's currently already on the site. New intake, release, central control, medical and mental health, pharmacy, and a vehicle Sallyport. Right now, the exchange of many inmates occurs on Wednesdays out at the branch between numerous agencies up and down the state, and it's, there's just no room in the facility. So those occur out in the visitor parking lot, which is unsecured. So this will help ease that problem as well. And then the new kitchen laundry and the classrooms, as well as a guardhouse, if you will, will be to the north of that construction, off to the property there, you can see in the color. And that will have its own separate entry as well for the delivery trucks. Okay, so as far as the staffing levels go, these positions are what is needed on top of what we already have. And we'll break them down and explain the different positions. So for the medical housing unit, there's a need of one officer per day, per shift, and we have four shifts out there, so that's a total of four deputies. And the same with the acute psychiatric care unit.
So just, how do you get to four shifts per day?
No, four shifts per week.
Oh, per week?
I may have said day, excuse me if I did.
I got you, okay.
So we have, you know, 24/7 operation, 12-hour shifts.
Got it, thanks.
And then one position at booking, again, around the clock with the four shifts per One in the warehouse for day shift, and we have two sides of the day shift, so that's a grand total of two deputies there. It's only needed during the daytime because it's not operational during the nighttime.
I'm sorry, did you say what's in the warehouse? I saw that you eliminated the cost for another warehouse. Is it storage, or?
Oh, no, the warehouse is both for dry and cool storage, for food and clothing and mattresses and you name it, everything that we need to run the facility with. The off-site storage that's $250,000 is for the cold storage of food.
Thank you.
Can I just, while you've got this slide up?
Sure.
Going back, so there's no booking done whatsoever now down there?
Rarely. So we do, on occasion, conduct bookings for Galt.
Yeah, you used to book down there, I know.
Yeah, it's very rare that it happens. And we have one deputy that currently runs the control room in there that will handle that booking if needed. With a new booking facility, you're looking at 10 times the amount of traffic coming through there, because then Elk Grove would be allowed in there, CHP, the South deputies.
So does it relieve any of the booking needs down here? And is that taken into account relative to any shift of responsibility? Because if you do it there, it means you're not doing it here, at least in the same quantity. So what sort of offset is considered in that overall?
It's very difficult to put a number on that, but it'll certainly relieve some of the downtown traffic, but the downtown traffic is overwhelming as it is. So we're hoping that that will relieve the pressure that's already put on the main jail. But I don't have a number for you exactly.
No, I'm just trying to get some sense, again, because we're looking at staffing, because once we commit, and again, I know you've done analysis, so I'm not questioning because I don't believe you, I'm just trying to get some sense.
I understand.
Because when we commit to this, you know, this is a $9 million ask, it will be ongoing, and that will only go up, it will never go down. And so I'm just trying to get some sense as you try to allocate, and you may refine this, but particularly the sworn positions. It's when, you know, when we, you know, sworn folks, then they're hired on, and, you know, and they have a duty to do, and that's why I'm asking that, though, with the booking, you need to have somebody there, I understand. But if you trade some of that activity, that may be relative to the overall activity in the county, then it says, you know, you have officers that are assigned down here, and I know it gets stacked up on certain hours of the day and times of the week and so forth, is that, but basically you're gonna have four more deputies solely assigned to booking at the new, at RCCC that, you know, where one kind of handles it now because it's very intermittent, so.
Well, what you're looking at is four deputies for all four shifts. So it's one deputy that we're adding.
Right, right, but I mean, again, but you're putting four more positions that will keep that coverage for 24/7 throughout.
Correct, correct. We anticipate getting much more bookings than we do now, which is almost nothing, but I don't really have a number, I couldn't tell you. But to the effect, could we take bodies from the main jail to augment?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. I think the volume is still too high. And what we, the other things that we have that they don't have at the main jail are bookings of ICE detainees. We have, like I said, the transportation hub of many state prisons that meet there to exchange prisoners, to drop off prisoners with us. Those are things that that deputy will be responsible for as well.
For the exchange of prisoners, then? So they don't come to downtown, they come to RCCC in order, if you, somebody's transporting to LA or Riverside or Santa Clara, it doesn't occur here, it occurs down there?
They don't have the room at the main jail to do that. They may have on occasion vans and so forth, but the bulk of it occurs at the branch.
And that occurs now, though?
Yes, out in the visitor parking lot.
Okay.
And again, did I answer your question for the warehouse, I think?
Yes, you did, thank you.
In addition, again, one records officer per shift with a total of four records officers to handle the additional bookings that aren't currently being done. And two security officers, and those were for the new gatehouse, guardhouse, if you will, that is at the back of the facility where all the deliveries occur. So those deliveries will have anything from food to materials needed for the facility or to, you know, clothing and that kind of stuff. So that, the idea behind the guardhouse is to fully check, inspect all the vehicles coming in and out of there, so we're gonna need to, because those occur on day shift only, so it's not around the clock.
I'm sorry, and there's, so the layout is such they can't all come through one guardhouse? And why is that?
The current design and the current construction of the facility doesn't allow for the travel of that because of the footprints that already currently exist there. So the idea was to design a road coming north of the current entrance, which will give us a direct link to the warehouse, which is the only part of the property that will fit the warehouse. So it's better for security reasons, but it's also, it makes more sense as far as ingress and egress.
Could you go back a couple slides on the site map and show me where that is? Sorry.
Okay, so to the north, northwest is the new warehouse kitchen area, and that's green and blue. And that road that you see going off to the east is a direct line to Bruceville. That will be the main entrance of all deliveries.
So you come in off Bruceville, you turn left if you're getting booked and right if you're going to the warehouse?
Correct.
And, so which one of those buildings is the booking location?
So booking is the green on the east side, right at the front, right off Bruceville. That is also currently where our current gatehouse is that the employees driving to right now.
Okay, so is that guardhouse that takes in the prisoners, that's getting improved also?
That cannot be used due to the funding. It cannot be connected to the current construction. So the booking is just adjacent to it, but the current gatehouse will still be used for processing employees and non-sworn employees coming in and out of the facility.
Okay, thank you.
So you're gonna have a kind of duplication then of where people enter, different people entering, but?
No, not really. I mean, the one, the one part of the entry is for prisoners. The other part is for employees. So there is a central control that is run by, this new central control run by an officer will actually control many of the gates and the cameras and the functions of the new facilities. But the old gatehouse is completely disconnected from any new construction, and that is solely a function of operating metal detectors and X-ray machines and stuff for employees coming onto the property.
So how many, what we're talking about here is trying to, you know, do we really need all these extra employees? Because that's a lot of cost. So there's no way to consolidate somehow the, you know, the intake area for either prisoners or civilians or sheriff's deputies checking in?
So everything that we're talking about here is in addition to what we've already consolidated. So our current booking staff would be moved to the new booking, but these are positions that would be needed on top of that. So again, we have one deputy that currently works a control position. So again, we have one deputy that currently works a control position in our old booking. He would be used in the new booking control, but we still need an officer now to be a booking officer, if that makes sense. So all the positions that we currently have that we can reuse, we are repurposing those. But these are positions that have been identified that we need to function the facility with what will be built.
So the booking, we've got four deputies there. You're really going to have five because that other person is coming over? Or is one of those four already paid for?
Well, one is paid for. That's the one that's currently in booking. Will go to booking the new control, central control. And then the four additional positions we're asking for are strictly for booking. There's no control there. They'll be handling inmates coming in and out of the facility for booking purposes. If you compare that to the main jail, you know, they probably have a staff of between male and female, four to six.
Oh, I'm not...
So I'm just trying to make a picture for you.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to, you know, we didn't need as many people. It's an ongoing cost.
I agree.
I guess you can't bring people in, you know, not have a night shift and let them be in a room and book them the next day?
If you have people there, they have to be watched. I mean, you know, there's nothing we can do about that. So when we start talking about the medical and the psych unit as well, we have to have coverage 24/7.
Okay, sorry, that was a naive question.
Okay, so that was a total of 22 detention staffing positions. That's the sworn side of the house and the security officers. On the new kitchen, they're looking for a total of six new cook-one positions, which are used primarily in the production of... In the new kitchen, production of the food. And the idea behind the cook-chill is to produce weeks in advance, prepared meals that would then be transported down the main jail and then re-therm there, re-thermed at the branch. Again, the layout at the branch is one that we have, you know, we're so spread out, we have various locations with different kitchens as well. So they already have the current cook positions will work there as well to monitor the inmates and re-therm all the food that's coming out of the main kitchen. So that's the need for the new one.
So are there any... So were there any savings in all of this? All I see is adding seven more positions, maybe for efficiency sake. I get it, but you can prepare meals in advance. You've got to prepare meals either that moment or in advance. So where is... Help me understand, where is the savings? Because then you've got... You're still transporting meals, you're preparing them, and you're bringing on seven more positions.
Yeah, so the cook-chill, the idea behind the cook-chill is to be able to save the cost per inmate per day by cooking in bulk. So there's going to be a built-in savings there.
Okay.
The other idea is, and there's been discussions about, that kitchen that could possibly use as an emergency operations center for providing food for just more than just the jail facilities if needed. So those discussions were long before me, but that was the plan behind it was it's a facility that could potentially, you know, expand out to other county entities such as probation, you know, hospitals and so forth if need be. So that's where the savings would be. Up front, you're right. It's an additional six cooks to pretty much do what we're doing now.
Same amount of meals, maybe in advance, but yeah.
So the cost savings really is in the food preparation itself. And I don't know what that number is, and I'm sure it doesn't compare to probably the positions, but over time, that's the idea behind it. And then the warehouse savings.
Are these sworn positions?
No.
So... But if you're doing it in advance versus doing it on the very day, at some point in time, so you... But you're projecting you'll never catch up. You'll prepare them a week or two in advance, but, I mean, hypothetically, if you could do it fast enough and get enough of them, if you had enough places to store them, you could, you know, do a year's worth of meals and then take some days off.
Well, that is the case. Actually, there's a prep time, and I'm not a cook, so I don't remember exactly.
No, I'm not either.
But it's... There's a prep time of, it might be Monday through Friday, and then they have the weekend off. So we're not running the cooks those days as well, but the cooks that are doing the re-therms 24/7 around every day of the week for the other facilities.
Yeah.
Right? So I don't know what their schedules would actually look like, but that was provided to me, to be able to produce the food that needs to be produced.
It would be helpful because, again, as we look at this in the overall, and obviously we're, you know, you're here because, you know, we said we're taking the grant, we're going to do the renovations that were needed and, you know, for a variety of reasons. And I think to know, though, that as we look at, you know, we're again building the employee base to provide the services and the programs and, you know, the oversight that's required, that whatever savings, and I don't put it all off on you, that there's some calculation. Because again, you know, what I... What we see in the simple equations are total protective staffing increase. We see general fund dollars in the order of magnitude of millions and millions of dollars a year that are taken on by virtue of service we can provide. We get a new facility with 25, 26, you know, beds for folks who may have, you know, mental illness or other challenges. And so now, I just should say that as we come back, and again, you know, some of this... The sheriff's done some of this internally and with your consultant costs and so forth. I think there needs to be some analysis because, again, we're too far in it, and we're not going to say no. But on the other hand, what sort of savings accrue, at least some offsets, even though there aren't savings, but because... I'll just say, you know, sitting up to years I have and knowing that, you know, we move forward, but then the incremental piece of this is big. And having come off of the recession where we were downsized, we did all those things, now we're looking to improve the setting both within the correctional facility, but certainly hopefully some of the outcomes. I guess I'm just curious as to that, you know, it's like we don't go back, we go forward, but I need to know what we account for in the going forward so that, you know, if we're making these changes. And he's correct. I remember that discussion about being the emergency operations, food preparation for X, Y, and Z. Well, I don't think that's, you know, it could happen in a, you know, in an extreme circumstance. I don't think that's our plan right now, and if it is, then somebody needs to tell me that.
It's not our plan right now.
Okay, so... But he's correct. I remember those discussions at one time, and that was a kind of a grandiose plan. Well, that's not part of the base anymore. We may have the capacity to do that if we were called upon. So I guess what I'm asking for is you come forward in the months ahead, and, you know, we're talking about ramping up and just... This is just the RCCC. We haven't even got to talking about the main jail yet as to what the offsets might be in all of this. Because again, I'm having a hard time seeing anything but just spending more money, again, not for, you know...
The offsets are at the state of California because they can let these guys out of prison.
That is, that's what happened.
But they're going to pass along the savings to us.
I'll be waiting to see that check and go to the bank and put it in together. Okay, but anyway, so now, again, without getting a great analysis, but I know we were looking at corrections, some of the costs and so forth, and this is just seems to me... And then you haven't gotten to the general services backup piece yet, which we're going to get to, and I know Jeff's here. Because, you know, again, you know, we're replacing some facilities, we're adding some things new, but we're adding significant sworn staff, support staff or sworn staff, food preparation staff, medical staff, support staff, get a home... You know, there's seven more people to just do the maintenance, and these are really brand-new facilities. But I don't, you know, square footage-wise, and yet we got people down there already keeping, you know, together with bailing wire and bubble gum in some cases. And so I'm having a hard time getting to this hill when it comes to, you know, how this was such a great deal from a county general fund standpoint, anyway. I am not seeing it, recognizing we're into this now, but anyway, continue.
Well, with that, let me discuss the correctional health services staffing levels. So for the staff of the new booking intake and release facility, there require five registered nurses. And then the psych unit is four LVNs, two LVNs, and one psychiatrist. Now, these are positions that obviously we don't have out there right currently in the numbers due to the fact we don't have a medical or psych unit that's anywhere near that. We don't have a facility to even care for what we probably need to be caring for. So it gives us obviously what we need, but along with that comes the staffing levels that we're talking about here. So the total is 12 correctional health positions. And then this is the ongoing total staffing projection and the positions. And then the operational cost that you were talking about. So the estimated cost for the energy and the maintenance is below the personnel cost that we just discussed. General Services anticipates requiring three additional maintenance personnel in the second year at a cost of $410,000 annually, $920,000 annually for seven personnel starting in year two. And Department General Services anticipates requiring additional maintenance supplies in the second year at a cost of $90,000 annually or $180,000 annually for maintenance supplies starting in year two. And if I go to the next, which is the life cycle cost analysis, the estimation of the cost to operate and maintain the MEP or the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems that include... That were included in SB 1022 funding. This is for a 30-year period, and this was conducted by the DLR group using standard life cycle cost principles. So during that assessment, they assume the energy, gas, and electric and sewer costs increase at 3% annually for 30-year period. And the estimate is $117.8 million to construct, operate, and maintain for 30 years or an average of 3.9 annually. So that figure includes $18.8 million in the construction cost, which is already included in the $88.9 million cost of the project itself. And then they estimate that the first year cost for maintenance and energy for the new systems will be $1.9 million.
Could I ask you a question? So when I saw those estimates in here, so that's additional energy costs, you're going to have more energy efficiency. I know you added some more motors, you're going to have a chill facility and all that, but so old antiquated facilities, old heater units, air conditioning, not even... Everything's air conditioned out there, I don't believe. But so we're going to have another $2 million in life cycle against maintenance, part of that, but the energy. So how is it that you build a new facility that's more energy efficient, better lighting and all that, and it's going to cost us, I don't know what proportion, Sheriff, it's in here in the report somewhere. So how do we get to that? I understand sewer connections and so forth. We're only adding 25 beds. We already have a kitchen facility. I mean, what is it that we're going to... I get... What I'm having a hard time with all of this is that it's just so additive. You know, you get this grant, and so, you know, yippee, we get to build this facility. And now when I look at what we're going to take on, and again, back in my mind, I'm thinking about across the street here, what, you know, and that's not your responsibility today to explain that, but so... Anyway, so how do we get to more energy costs when, in fact, we're going to do new facilities that are better insulated, better lighted, better heated and cooled, more energy-efficient motors and so forth, and it's going to cost us... Or is it more? Is it less? I don't know.
Well, this is in addition to the current facilities that will still be maintained out there, but this cost comes from an analysis that is an industry standard based on what is being built. That's... Unless someone from DGS wants to address that, I couldn't answer that question.
Yeah, okay. Maybe Jeff or somebody can, Mike Moore. So again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, I understand.
I just, you know, to understand this, again, because this is, you know, basically day when we give you the pass on this, then it's, you know, you get, you know, green flag, go. I mean, you're already going, you're going to build this thing. And so if we bless this and at least don't ask the questions, then we're not doing our job either, and I just...
I understand.
Yeah, I know you do. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to understand some of the math here, and I do share some of the shock that has been expressed thus far by our chair about the statements at the conclusion of the presentation about the kind of the overall shock for me. But I need some help on the arithmetic. I'm looking at page two of the board letter under fiscal impact, and it shows $6.2 million in additional personnel cost for security and correctional health. And then later in the same paragraph, it says the overall... The overall cost for personnel maintenance and energy is $9.1 million, and that's a general fund cost, total general fund cost. But I'm looking at the $6.2 million identified for personnel plus here on this slide, the $1.9 million for maintenance and energy. That's $8 million. What am I missing? $8 million versus $9.1?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Do you have the board letter in front of you?
I do not.
Okay, who has the board letter in front of them besides the board?
I have it.
Okay. So go to page two, please, under fiscal impact. That boxed paragraph there says, this box identifies $6.2 million in additional personnel cost for security and correctional health personnel. You go down further, and there's a sentence that says, estimated total first year cost for personnel maintenance and energy is $9.1. See that?
Yes.
$9.1, okay. So if you take the $6.2 identified above just for personnel and security and add it to the $1.9 that's on his current slide, which is maintenance and energy, that's referencing the same component total cost, and that's $8.1, not... Or that's $8 million, not $9.1. So I'm trying to reconcile that.
I think if he goes one slide prior.
So does that include the $2 million for the 12 correctional health staff that's listed in there as well?
Does it include the what?
There's $2 million for 12 correctional health service personnel.
Yeah, because the $6.2 includes that, yes.
$6.2 should be for security, staff, and personnel, right?
Right, and that's $2 million is a parenthetical that makes up the $6.2.
Captain, go back one slide. The one that is one more. Keep going. It's right there, surprise Serna, I think, is how you get to $9.1.
Yeah, but I'm not...
You're not tracking the board letter?
I'm trying to track the board letter. I'm not trying to track this graph.
Give us one minute, let me...
Does the rest... Do my colleagues see what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Doesn't look like the $6.2 million they're referencing doesn't take into account the $520,000 board updated. Well, it's actually down here. $520,000, you add that into the $6.2, you get to...
Do you mind explaining that since you're already here?
Jeff Gasway with General Services. The $6.2 million you're referencing plus the $520,000 for the additional non-sworn staff comes to the $6.7 million that was referenced in the earlier slides.
Where is it in the fiscal impact on the staff report?
Yeah, see, it's not...
I think it's just below that 12 correctional health.
Yeah, I see it, okay, yeah.
Beyond the personnel expenses identified, SSD has anticipated requiring approximately $520 in additional non-security personnel expenses.
Okay.
And then it talks about the DGS costs as well for the total of $7.1 million.
Yeah, that's another $930,000.
Is there still a difference, still a delta? Very confusing, obviously.
It is. I believe with that number, if you take the $1.9 and then add the additional $90,000, that should bridge it, but I'll do a quick... Let me do this. Let me work with Brett and sheriff's staff to come up with a discrepancy and let him finish his presentation. We'll get back to your question.
All right.
Could I just get a clarification? So we're adding all total about $120,000 square feet of new building? And is that net new building square footage? Or is that a gross, where you net out some old classrooms and so forth?
That's all new.
That's all. So the net new square footage, including the well building and so forth, the shops, medical facility, all the things you described earlier, that's $120,000 square feet of...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the actual numbers, but I could tell you if it's reference to square footage, it's talking about the new construction because nothing is connected to any old construction.
Okay, but is it displacing? Is anything coming down? I guess that's my question. So what would be the net of, you know, lost versus new replacement slash new replacement?
So at this point, nothing's coming down for various reasons. For instance, the old booking is still connected to RBF. old booking is still connected to RBF, so that will maintain. The current medical facility, which is very tiny, will probably still remain as an outpost of some sort, so-
Old kitchen-
And the old kitchen will be a re-therm kitchen for that side of the property. The problem with us is we're so spread out, as you know, so, the main kitchen will be the main, the new main kitchen will be the main kitchen, but the old kitchen will be another re-therm for the honor side inmates.
So, and that may help to explain my point I made earlier about, you know, cost of adding more, you know, service personnel to service it, so, you basically, the old stuff is not getting displaced, it may get reused or used less, but it's gonna be there, so we're gonna keep facilities, in some cases, that are, what, they're 40 years old, 50 years old, at least?
Well, I-
Before you were born, probably.
Yes, probably. I think the future plan is to eventually, you know, tear some of the older buildings down, but currently, where there's a need for RBF, for instance, booking will not be staffed, but it's connected to that building, which is sometimes staffed, and then-
Right.
The kitchen, the old kitchen will be used as a re-therm, that is in the plans for reutilizing some of the current staff we have to maintain that, so.
So, currently, you have some, use some portable buildings, or fairly modestly in-place buildings for like culinary arts classrooms, so-
Correct.
Are you gonna retain those, and then put new ones, or are you gonna take any of those, I mean, your campus, as you said, you're pretty spread out, but are you, is that all new classrooms, we've got 11,500 square feet of new classroom?
Yeah, so, that's a great question. We, that actually wasn't even talked about, because they're basically trailers, but-
I know, right, yeah.
Ideally, that will replace those trailers, but office spaces is such need out there that we may keep a couple around for that reason.
Okay.
But, yeah, we're looking at maybe six additional classrooms, which would, would really help things out.
No, I think that would be good, I mean, I'm supportive of that, that's, I think that's a vocation, hopefully with somebody's folks-
That's kind of part of the point of that whole facility, isn't it, to train people for re-entry?
Correct.
So some of those trailers may get yanked out of there, then, 'cause it is a bosh-bosh, so.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Phil, did you have any other questions, or Susan? Okay, all right, good, continue. They didn't tell you it was gonna be a long presentation, did they?
Oh, I anticipated it. I understand, trust me, I understand. I think I was down to the last point on this last PowerPoint. The maintenance supply cost of $90,000 in the first year, and $180,000 annually in the second year. And that's, that's really the overall summary of that, other than the question that we're still gonna get answered for you, so.
All right, Phil, you punched up?
Yeah, thank you. So, I have a general question for Mr. Gill. This, this act, this requested action, is this, how is, how should we think about this, how should the five of us think about this in the context of the upcoming recommended 17, 18 budget for the Sheriff's Department?
So what we're gonna be expecting from the sheriff is what portion of this plan needs to be funded for 17, 18, and what's 18, 19?
Okay.
So the bulk of the cost here is 18, 19, and we'll present to you in June whatever components they need for 17, 18.
Okay.
And the purpose today was to kind of give you a little bit of a preview, we took a motion a couple of years ago, we wanted the grant, and we had talked at that point that there was a 10% match, and today's that day that we kind of pushed down the road.
Right.
So that's what the purpose today is, and then it does frame our discussion, working with the Sheriff's Office, what, what it kind of needs to have, and to move forward.
Yeah, I certainly do not want to minimize the, the need for facility improvements, and then, of course, the fact that we need to, to staff the facility for the needs of this county at our, at our, one of our jail facilities, but I do have to express some, some just overall philosophical frustration with the fact we're talking about, and I understand that this, you know, this is a, this is a grant, so it's a responsibility pursuant to a grant, but it is extremely frustrating to have to go through all the mental gymnastics, and push and pull, and having public workshops, and having these chambers filled, and kind of the tortured conversation, you know, ad nauseam about just trying to find the ability to enhance our other facility needs relative to some of the other initiatives in this county. I mean, it'd be very easy for someone to point out that, you know, by way of this action, you know, we are focused on certainly enhancing the facilities and personnel deployment for incarceration, and we're not even near the same in terms of our focused intent to find facilities and personnel for a homeless triage center, or for, you know, park ranger rangers, I mean, pick your, you know, pick your example. So, again, I think all, all of us have said at one point in time, that in some respects, there, if you, if you want service delivery, get incarcerated. I mean, that's where you can get healthcare, if you don't have it, that's where you can get mental healthcare, if you don't have it, it's where you can get your pharmaceuticals, if you can't get them. So that, to me, is just a, it's a, it's an odd way to think about things, I know, but it just shouldn't be this hard to, to also identify, when we need to identify our facility needs or our personnel needs for, for other various critical initiatives, and this is not, please, for those of you from the Sheriff's Department, do not interpret this as condemnation of the Sheriff's Department, I don't, that's not my intent in speaking up this way. My intent in speaking up this way is just to remind our executive staff, the public, and my colleagues, that time and time again, we have these priorities, and I understand why they rest where they do, but there's gotta be a shift here, at some point, there's gotta be a shift, where we're not stealing from any other priority area, but we're trying to elevate some of those prior, other priority areas with the same kind of order of magnitude of, of resource allocation. So you can bet, at least, Mr. Gill, that I'll, I'll be bringing this day up when we get into our budget discussions in June, as a reminder of, you know, where we're committing ourselves today, should this pass, relative to the needs of a particular department, but it'll be, be a reminder, it'll serve as a reminder, again, of where we need to have equal focus, at least, on other areas and other initiatives that deserve serious consideration for, for resources.
Okay, Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So now, you know, the, the recommendation here is to drop, adopt the revolution, the resolution approving the attached staffing plan and operational costs, but it's, but we still have to go through the mental gymnastics at the budget time. So what does this really do? Does this just show the state that, look, we're thinking about this?
It shows how our 10% comes in, how will we operate the facilities, that's basically what this ends up doing. When it comes to budget time, there will be refinement, the timeline might slip, it's been slipping, there could be other changes made, but this shows a commitment from this board how to staff this going forward.
So it does lock us in, in a sense?
Yes, it is locked in.
Well, I mean, that's the thing, I mean, it, well, I mean-
Or why can't we do it in June?
I guess because, you know, Supervisor Peters said, you know, this is the whole idea that we realize is to get people so that they're transitioning out and all, but, you know, $9.2 million a year to the probation department, and certain programs could do that, too, I mean, and, you know, we just gave a lot of money last year, and deservedly so, and I think we all supported it for the Sheriff's Department to do the intelligent model policing, with the understanding there would be more down the road, and we haven't even let that work yet, though it's showing great promise, and I think we're all committed to that, and what it does for the neighborhoods of the district, but, you know, I, this is going forward with another $9 million, $9.2 million, it's $9.2 plus after the first year.
Can I answer that real quick? The staffing plan is what the BSCC requires to give the funding, and it's, like you said, an acknowledgement that, that the board understands that it's gonna require some staffing.
Yeah, it's a good acknowledgement.
Honestly speaking, this is the staffing way identified that we believe at a minimum we're gonna need, but as far as it's locking us into anything, I don't know about that.
I, well, I'm not criticizing you guys-
No, no, I understand.
I actually appreciate the fact that you're clearly not trying to hide the ball anywhere here, you're giving us a-
We see the ball.
Yeah.
Just gotta be able to catch it.
I think the ask of spirit is that this is what the issue is that we have, are we locked into the 9.2? I mean, that's a conversation we gotta have with the sheriff, their budget's not-
But is it a conversation we have to have with the state of California, is what I'm saying. I mean, that's when I use the phrase locked in, I mean, are we tying our budgetary hands down the road, and maybe Mr. Ferguson is the one that wants to answer that question.
Perhaps I can clarify a little bit. I think the, the shorter answer is, as Mr. Gill said, that we are not, we are not locked into this precise amount, but the, what we are doing here, and what the state is requiring us to do in order to receive the grant, is to provide a staffing plan that basically indicates that you, as a board, understand that there will be, there will be staffing costs, there will be costs associated with running this facility. If we regret the grant, and if we build the facility, we are, will be legally obligated to operate it, I think for 20 years?
Well, 30 years.
There's my answer.
Yeah, we're legally to op, to operate the facility as we've proposed that it will be operated in terms of, we're gonna have these features, these types of facilities, mental health, all those things. Obviously, you know, over time, staffing requirements can change, philosophy can change, lots of things can change, but I think, to the sheriff's credit, as you said, they've identified what they think, more or less, not necessarily to the exact dollar, but more or less the sorts of things that are gonna be needed to operate the facility as it's designed. So, these components of the facility that are being funded out of this grant. So there is some flexibility, but not, you wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't have the flexibility to the point where you couldn't operate it as it was designed, and as we were funded to operate the facility.
If I could, I mean, kind of stating the obvious, I think what the board's struggling with, level of wiggle room we have is not that big in this. So once we started seeking this, 80 million, there's a 10%, that's what we were seeking, so the dollar amount's always been out there, we just never quantified or showed you what the plan was gonna be, that's what we did today, and there is a sticker price component in here. Can we move some money around, do some different kind of modeling, maybe?
The funny thing is, though, is that if, if what we agreed to was an $80 million grant with a 10% local match, but now we're talking about operation costs of over $9 million per year for 20 years, that's a different conversation.
Correct. Well, we are at, the total cost is sitting at about 90 million at this point, so there is, the cost has gone up, we've got additional money.
Okay.
So that's basically the essence of what you have in front of you. I just didn't want the board to believe that there's gonna be, that you're seeing a $9 million, what we showed you today, I'm picking a number out of the air, that by June, or by next June, when bulk of this is gonna come due, we're gonna be at 7 million. I just don't want to have the board left with that impression, I don't think the Sheriff's Office wants that impression left, either. That's the minimum is what, what we're talking about, is the $9 million.
Bill?
Thank you. What's our, now, what's our current parks budget?
All funds 12, about 12 million.
So, I mean, just to put it in perspective, I mean, a parks budget for a county of a million and a half peoples is just, you know, 3 million more, basically, than, than this. Let me ask you this, what's the time sensitivity on this? I feel much, much, much more comfortable if we had, if we're asked to make this decision in the context, in the immediate context of the budget.
I need more information.
Do we?
Hi, Chris Bryson, Architectural Services Division. Right now, we are on schedule with the state for preliminary plan approval for March 10.
What does, what does it mean if you miss, if you miss March 10?
More months of delay by the state. So, that's to move forward into design, finishing out the design, and I believe at that point, that's, that's when they want the cost analysis and the staffing plan approved.
Okay, so there's no, there's no punitive damage to us if we, if we wait until the summer?
Not technically, but there is what's called CCI indexes that every, every month we go on.
I know what a CCI index is.
We're, we're losing quite a bit of money to inflation.
Professor, if I could, if the board so desires, we could continue this, let me have a little bit more conversation with Architectural Services Sheriff, I want to make sure that we're not jeopardizing any of the grant component, make sure the state understand what question we have, and then report back to you on what the delay would mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just be frank, I just think you'd get a no vote out of me today, because I just feel that uncomfortable with this kind of order of magnitude expense, outside of understanding what you plan to bring us in totality relative to the Sheriff's Department. I need that, I need that understanding before I can commit to this.
Let us talk to the state, if the board so desires.
You know, just, just one other point on this, thanks, Chris. You know, we are, again, facing a look at downtown facilities, and I think, again, how we, one, deal with folks before they get to jail, you know, when it comes to mental health, and some of the medical facilities, obviously, if they commit crimes, or, you know, the offenses for which they can be arrested and incarcerated for, then they're gonna, you know, be housed in, you know, in RCCC, or if they're sentenced, or downtown jail, whether waiting trial, or some disposition, but it seems to me that, I mean, we need just a little fuller picture, again, it doesn't, you know, it is not connected to this aspect of what we're doing, but it really is when it comes in the bigger picture, when we look at all the general fund dollars that have to go in both, certainly to provide the support services for staffing, in large part, but also, then, will we take on relative to facilities that then get borne by all the county departments potentially, or some other measure, and, and capital cost, in this case, is a 10% match, but still significant. I guess I, for one, just along the lines of more information, again, I don't want us to, you know, start tacking on more cost to a project that's already, you know, lifetime costs are $117 million, but I, but I do think that we need to have that little bigger picture here, as we look at, again, when I think about correctional health, what it costs us in its totality, you know, 40 million-plus dollars annually, not all general fund, a lot of realignment dollars in there, though, that could go to other services, so it's not just what we're looking at here today, it's, it's that overall drain, and, and we're talking about, I wanna put one more exclamation point on this, and again, this is not directed towards the Sheriff's Department, and it's not, you'll hear what I say in a moment, but when I think about the number of folks that actually, you know, touch the criminal justice system, and that actually, then, you know, pull on those dollars, and what we put into correctional health, just as a part of that, let alone feeding, and processing, and then obviously, doing the public safety work on, you know, outside of the facilities, it's incredible. And so, you not only look at this, this aspect, but what's coming down the pike, and again, I think to Susan's point earlier this afternoon, certainly we can thank the state for a lot of this, but nonetheless, it's the hand we're now being dealt, but before, we, at least knowing some of the cards that we have, and we don't get a chance to change the cards, we're basically gonna, you know, we're gonna have to deal with the hand that we're dealt, I just think that, when I look at the incredible amount of resources, and then, and what we heard this morning, for a good hour and a half, two hours, about some of the work that we're gonna try to do with folks that have addictions, a lot of them that may end up in criminal justice, some of them may end in jail, where we try to help people deal with mental illness, and, and some of the challenges there, again, not all the same pots of money, but the incredible amount of money that's being spent on a very small segment of our population, that I think really puts us at a disadvantage when we look for sheriff's requests to maybe provide more patrol services, or special enforcement to do certain things in neighborhood, or we're looking for health services for people, or we're looking to do, maybe have some general fund capacity to fix some roads in this county. To me, it, it's beginning to look like a big swirl here, something that, obviously, you folks have to help us juggle on any annual basis, but, but I wanna have a clearer picture, very frankly, of what we may be at least facing in part across the street, certainly we know what RCCC, and we've, again, maybe embarking on that, but this bigger picture, 'cause I gotta tell you, I think that if we aren't able to, to either get some relief from the state, which I'm not gonna sit here and count on that for a second, but that we are gonna get swallowed up by, you know, the commitments, and again, certainly under the guise of public safety, and maybe public protection, public health, but, but there's gonna be so little discretionary dollars left to, and we're gonna have a conversation this afternoon, if we get there, on TO tax, but to do anything that would be responsive, in, in, in good part, anyway, to the, you know, million and a half folks that we, we answer to, whether they're in the cities, or in the unincorporated county, I just find it incredibly challenging, and- And again, you know, that's not gonna change anything that's factual, but I guess I am concerned that we continue to go down these paths, we're dealing with the problems at hand, which we have to. But I certainly find it very compelling that we have this broad discussion because I just think we're gonna be so hampered, and we're not gonna be able to blame the recession. This is gonna be because of either legislation and/or commitments that we've made that this board, as it currently is seated here and going forward, is gonna, you know, you're not gonna grow your way out of it, because I don't see that revenue growth being there. And I think some of the funding sources we've depended upon for some of the things we do may shrink or become static. The general fund source is gonna be as precious as it's ever been. And I guess I'm seeing, these are general fund dollars that we're committing in large part, or realignment dollars that allow us the flexibility to do that. And with some of the, you know, things that are on the horizon that we know about, and certainly the sheriff and other departments have kept us surprised. I mean, I don't know how we're ever gonna strike out on some of these new initiatives. I just don't see the capacity there, certainly in good conscience, we can fool ourselves on any given year. And so, before we dive too far into all of this, and again, maybe the choice is, you don't have a choice. But I don't necessarily subscribe to that without at least having a discussion with my colleagues and with you and with folks either here and others that advise us and the broader public about it, because it's not about woe is us, it's just about the realities. And if that's the message that we tell folks is that, you know, those choices were made for us by somebody else, our obligations start here and stop here, and if you think you're gonna get any money for this or that in your neighborhood or your community for improvement, you're kidding yourselves, you're kidding us because it's just not there. And so, without being too stark about it, I just, Nav, I just think that that picture, again, needs to be really clear, because I think we're embarking upon a time when people think that, you know, prosperity is gonna be a little bit improved and economies, this and that. I don't see it from a county perspective, very frankly. I think that what's been handed to us legislatively and maybe judicially and out of necessity for some of the obligations that we have under why counties exist at all, I guess I don't see a very, very good path out of this, and that's not to be doom and gloom, but I just, I don't see it. And so, I just wanna be real about it, if we pursue this, and we do that, and we do this, before you know it, there's not pennies left in the cookie jar any longer. So, anyway, I would ask you, if you come back, we may not have that context behind it. So, sorry about that comment, but.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna make myself, my position clear here. I mean, I agree with what's been said, you know, and I would be in the same position of not being able to support this today. And the biggest reason is, is because I feel like I would be making a decision that locks this county in for a great number of years for a lot of money without having it at all in context and without seeing what the full budget picture looks like. And that's where my, I believe this is, you know, basically what Supervisor Serna said as well, and I agree with that. So, I need more information to find out what, you know, when our successors come, you know, what are we locking them into and how does it impact the rest of the budget?
So, we're gonna continue it to a certain date?
I would like to continue it to February 28th, that gives us time to talk to the state, at least come back and let you know if we will go till June, what's the impact, and then go from there.
We scheduled that for a night meeting now? I'm saying that, because we've added so many items to the 28th.
I jumped.
I know you did. I didn't want you to jump out of your seat, I just, anyway, okay, so that's gonna go over to the 28th. Do you have a time, Ms. Flo?
Do you guys have a preference, the morning or afternoon? We can do 11:30 or we can do 3:30?
3:30.
3:30.
Okay, 3:30.
Is that, is that okay?
Well, I guess, I don't know what else is on that day, it's a pretty full calendar.
Not 11:30, I can tell you that.
How about, we are looking at opening March 1st to have a meeting because we have a lot of items coming. So, why don't we look at March 1st, let's bring it back in the afternoon then.
Okay, all right. Good, to give it the attention it's due. Again, I wanna thank you all for the presentation, I know a lot of work went into it, and again.
You can give it again in a couple of weeks.
Need a motion to continue?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, move a second to continue this to March 1st, at what time?
Let's do 2:00 PM for now.
Okay, all right, that's PM, not AM. Please vote.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you all, see you back in a couple of weeks. All right. We've got the airports item and a TO tax item, so let's take airports.
Airports. Also, just wanna let the board know, I do have, Steve can tell me, I wanted him to give a brief update on storms, and I know he's got EOC active, can we just have him do it so he can get back to the EOC?
Sure. Mr.?
Before John, before airports?
Yeah, John, if you could yield for a minute, please, yeah. Steve?
Sorry, John, he's got it.
It's all right.
While he's coming down, is Zan Edwards gonna be here a little bit later, too?
Yes, other staff is upstairs watching.
Thank you.
Yeah, he'll be here.
Okay, good afternoon, Steve.
Thank you, Board Chair and Board Members. Stephen Toleme from County OES, we did activate this morning at about 12 o'clock. We have a Level 2 activation for the storm that's coming in, came in yesterday, actually. And this is a series of storms, we'll have one more coming in on Thursday. Right now, the precipitation is a little less than it was forecasted, so we're looking a little bit better than we thought we would be. We expect the water to stay within the channel, at least through today and into Thursday. Thursday's a different story, our biggest concern is that they're gonna be right at the flood stages, so we may see some overtopping like we did in the previous storm in January. So, we have sent out notices to the Point Pleasant area and to Wilton, letting them know that they need to take precautions because we may see some flooding in the same places that we saw in the last storm. And the bigger concern is that the impact the previous storm had on the levee systems down there, we know we've weakened them in a lot of places, so we're concerned with the integrity of those levees. So, we're monitoring it really closely, we're flying the helicopter, giving us some aerial observations, telling us where we are seeing any type of overtopping. And as of about 3 o'clock, we hadn't seen any, so that was the good news. As far as the last storm, we submitted our initial damage estimates to CalOES and to FEMA as well. We reported $14.8 million, and that is not going to be a final number. We still have a lot of places that we weren't able to get into because of the flooding, so we can't get estimates in those areas. And also, the cost will fluctuate, too, those are just initial damage estimates, so they'll refine that as they get a better look at some of the damages. That also excluded the ag damages, that's a separate entry by the ag commissioner. Last I talked to her, it was around $2.8 million, but that may be different from the last time I talked to her, so I'm not sure about that total number. And that was about it for an update, was there any questions?
I had a question. Have you looked at the Sacramento River and the American River levees and during the last, I know you're busy flood fighting, I think the expression is. Do you have any comment on how they're holding, were there any problems on those levees?
No, they're doing really well, we monitor them, just like we do the other rivers. The Sacramento's doing fine, the only real issues we have right now with them, as a matter of fact, as of this morning, they hadn't even opened up the Sacramento weir yet. The Yola weir was open, but it's looking good. We do have one thing, though, that we're keeping an eye on. At about 3 o'clock, we were noticed by Orville that
Oh, I saw that.
They have an issue with their dam, and I have a picture on my cellphone of it. Initially, it was reported as just some erosion on the spillway. I got the picture just about 20 minutes ago, and it looks like a large sinkhole. So, it is a significant issue for Orville.
How high up the spillway is it?
It looks to me, you know, from an aerial picture, it looks to me it's about midway, but I can't be sure of that. And so, they're not flowing any water, there's no outflow, there's still about a 48,000 CFS inflow, so they're about 80% of capacity, you know, until we hear more from them, I don't know exactly what this means, other than they're not gonna flow any water until they can inspect that damaged hole in the center of their spillway.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we still, you enacted a state of emergency this morning, you extended it for another 30 days, so the event that's coming, we're covered under what you passed this morning.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Just a couple of questions, I've gotten inquiries, again, certainly as we get a chance to sort out from these storms, but from folks who've, you know, either noted on their property or throughout the general neighborhood where they reside, but certainly seen reports about it, you know, when it hits somebody's house, but the tree canopy and the damage to the tree canopy, particularly in light of saturated soils, the winds, and, you know, and obviously you get to, you know, the incidental or related damage to homes and cars and such. But I don't know if there's any accounting for that in your disaster declaration, but certainly I know there's disaster declarations when we've had die-off in the forest for, you know, related to the drought. And again, I don't know how you get a, you know, concrete really number as relates to that, but I would just say that I've had that inquiry about, you know, that, and if it can be accounted for or disaster damage, I don't know what that means, if that means you just tell you how badly you were hit, both on private and public property. But I would just say that I know that there's areas in the county where, and it's not over yet, I mean, the winds last night, you know, continues to take trees down and so forth, and so, and not just ornamentals, but I think, you know, some of our, you know, heritage trees and so forth elsewhere in the community, so is there some accounting for that? Is there, if you had folks that wanted to account for that, you could keep that in your tally or not?
We're trying to get some sort of a survey on that through the state insurance commissioners. We're trying to see if they can provide us with some data in terms of the number of people reporting insurance damage. It wouldn't account for the people that do not have insurance, and we don't really have a mechanism to capture that, other than they can call our EOC and report it. And to date, we've only had one person call and report damage without insurance.
Okay, but just loss of the canopy alone, I mean, even, I'm saying if it didn't hit a building or whatever, but if trees were down, you know, and again, I'm not trying to overwhelm EOC at a time when obviously you're looking at, you know, potential flood fight and so forth, but that has been brought to my attention, that's kind of aftermath of the January storms, and here we are into it. So, maybe I could have some more discussion with the offline about that. I did want to, again, I know Nav is here in the chambers, that you've given the alert, again, and I gotta thank you for certainly in Wilton and Point Pleasant, and there will be likely, as soon as maybe tomorrow morning, you know, people are watching the gauges, and I guess I would just ask you, what is, you said stay within channels, what is the latest projection down at Benson's Ferry?
Let me see, I have it written down here.
Which is Thornton, basically Thornton, but that's the area that.
At Michigan Bar, it's supposed to crest at 14:02.
Today?
Today, at about 4 o'clock, so it should be cresting right around now.
But then it takes a couple of days to get down.
Right, and then I also have McConnell, it's supposed to crest at 42, same time. And then at Benson Ferry, it was supposed to crest at about 17:08.
But that's not till tomorrow, right?
That'll be at about 6:00 AM on Thursday.
And again, if we get the request, I've spoken to you, Nav, about, you know, again, in the event that the community is gonna see flooding of houses again, what action they might be able to take beyond what was either provided for and/or allowed, and I think that's, I just wanna put that out there, because I know I've had a number of conversations with folks, and I don't know if that's an EOC call, but just heads up, because that request may very well come forward, and we've looked at it for the flood fight down there.
Right, and we haven't had any requests, other than some help with some fallen trees. We've gotten the Forest Service to help us, or, excuse me, the California Department of Forestry to help with some of the felling and the cutting of the trees.
How about Reclamation District 1002, have they requested again to close Franklin Boulevard?
There has been a request that went to transportation, I don't know the outcome.
All right, well, then I probably need to, maybe by phone, after today's meeting, Nav, we can talk a little more, because again, I anticipate certainly for the Point Pleasant community that, you know, we've got basically tomorrow before that gets hit down there. And again, to the point that was asked about by Susan, is that saturated levees, but saturated ground, and water hasn't gotten out of that area there, at least completely, and so, you're starting already behind the curve. If you push more water in, it'll fill up that much quicker, so, all right. But I appreciate the heads up, and when you say stage two, you're not gonna have everybody doing 12-hour shifts.
Right now, we have about 25 people in there, and we're evaluating it. We wanted to see what the 4 o'clock crest looked like before we determine whether or not we're gonna have more people come in or less.
Okay.
So, when I get back to the EOC, we'll make that determination.
One last comment, I know that, at least in the Point Pleasant area, maybe elsewhere in the county, we had some, and again, we have franchise service, we had some missed garbage service pickup in that area, got handled, but again, we learned a lesson, and also, if wells, again, get inundated, we did, the EMD went out there and provided the testing and did it. Took us a while to kind of get that protocol ironed out because we hadn't had an event like this. So, I would just encourage just to continue to proceed, I know I got some very good feedback from, you know, a handful of folks who were affected in both of those cases, but they were very appreciative of the county's efforts in lots of regards, but that's very, very important, so, all right. And all the sandbag stations are open?
They are open, and they actually opened up a few additional ones. I think they put one in the Herald area because they wanted to do some precautionary sandbagging down there, so.
Where were they expecting down there?
I'm not sure, they put a request in at about 11 o'clock, and it was forwarded to DWR, and last I heard is that they were gonna fill that request. So, I haven't been able to follow up.
As we get more information, we will go to the same protocol and sending emails, update.
Text or phone call?
And you wanna talk about the phone call creed that you've started?
The?
Calling citizens?
I'm sorry?
The calling, letting them, warning them about the flood?
The Sacramento alert going out, yeah. So, we have sent out three alerts to Wilton and Point Pleasant area and Rio Linda, and we expect to send them out again on Thursday because we're gonna see just as much or more flooding on Thursday as well.
Okay.
So, we have kept in contact with those people, and we made phone calls to the RDs, just double checking to see whether they have any issues that they need to fix.
So, we ironed out, because we had RD 800 last time, we had a little confusion on the phone, so we're.
Right.
That's what we learned from January.
Right.
Okay, good, well, thank you, Steve, thanks for your folks, for everybody manning the centers, and again, for all the folks that respond both urgently as well as obviously keep an eye on things to help keep us alerted, and hopefully we'll, you know, get through this without too much flooding, so. All right, Steve, thanks. All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, Mr. Wheat?
Item 48 is the Department of Airport's Workshop on Airport Status and Accept the Draft Final Sacramento International Airport Master Plan.
I guess TJ's gonna have to handle it, I think John may have stepped out for a moment. So, what's the moment you want?
After waiting all day.
You wanna take our appointments?
Sure.
Okay, let's do it, let's go to our appointments then.
You mean the nominations, item 49?
Yes.
Okay. For your nominations, you are continuing to February 28th, the Adult and Aging Commission and the Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board. You are continuing to March 7th, the Assessment Appeals Board, Local Child Care Planning and Development Council. And for your matters today, your first is the Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Peters?
I'd like to reappoint Jennifer Kennedy, Craig Kramer, and Brenda Davis to the CPAC and continue the remainder to March 7th.
Okay.
Okay.
And for the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters?
To reappoint Bernie Leno, please continue remainder to March 7th.
And Supervisor Frost?
For Carmichael Old Foothill Farms, I want to appoint Patty Klein-Connect to continue, that's a reappointment.
Okay, and are you okay, let's see, you only have one anyway. Okay, so we're continuing that to March 7th. For the County Planning Commission, Supervisor Kennedy?
Nominate the incumbent.
Okay, and then Supervisor Frost?
Nominate Teresa Stanley.
Okay, and Supervisor Natoli?
James Shelby, incumbent.
Okay. And we're gonna continue, we're gonna have the appointment actually on the 28th, you guys are okay with that?
Yes.
Next is the Elk Grove Consumer Cemetery District, Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I would nominate the two incumbents, David Lima and Dennis Buescher.
And then we have Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Mr. Natoli?
Yes, I think, recommended by the chiefs to nominate Molly Shacone and to continue the remainder to March 21st.
Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Supervisor Frost?
Nominate Robert Klaus.
Okay, and Supervisor Peters?
I'd like to reappoint Patricia Vogel and continue the remainder to February 28th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Peters?
I can reappoint Becky Wood and Rebecca Lund, continue the remainder to February 28th.
And then we have the Galt Arno Cemetery District, Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, nominate Emmanuel Rocha, incumbent.
And then Public Health Advisory Board, Mr. Serna, I mean. And then Public Health Advisory Board, Mr. Serna, I mean, Mr. Natoli?
Okay, we have, I believe these are done in concert with the chiefs, Carol Jong, community member, Barbara Law, community member, incumbent, then also Martha Moon, public health professional, along with, I believe, I hope this is not a typo, I think it says Farla Kaufman?
Yes, yes.
Public health professional as well, and continue remainder for two weeks, or three weeks to February 28th.
Okay, and then we have the...
Well, excuse me, I guess these are all, did, were there a number of seats, I'll make sure I read this, they had the, for Barbara Law, community member, I don't know if those were others that just had applied?
I just have Barbara Law on.
Okay, Barbara Law, so I may have misspoke there, they had them all done and read, but I'm not so sure, so I think it was Barbara Law for community member, so I would retract what I said, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Barbara Law for community member, catch me on this, I was reading what was here and highlighted, and then continue remainder to February 28th.
And just so that I'm clear, for the two public health professionals, that's Martha Moon and Farla Kaufman?
Continue, I didn't have that, I just had to nominate, yeah.
Okay, so we're just nominating Barbara Law.
Hold those others, I'll get this squared away for the 28th, but I wanna make sure I didn't misspeak here, sorry.
All right, next is Rio Linda Elverta Community Planning Advisory Council, and Mr. Serna?
Yeah, for District 1, we're recommending reappointing Michael Hures.
Okay, and then Supervisor Frost?
Continue to 228, please.
Okay, and next is the Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board?
Okay, may I get it right this time, I have the recommendation after the interviews by the chief's staff, is Alicia Castiñera for the technical seat, and then Thomas Johnson for the technical seat, or the other technical, and then also Michelle Dalamore for public seat, and then continuing the remainder till March 21st.
Okay, and then your last one is the Sacramento County Youth Commission Supervisor Serna?
District 1 nominates Eleanor Love.
Okay, and Supervisor Frost?
Continue to 228, please.
And Supervisor Natoli?
No applicants, and so we'll have to continue searching for applicants, we'll continue this to, I think, March the, March 7th, the first meeting?
7th, okay.
I failed to mention, I need to weigh the process too, so I need a vote on that.
Okay.
This is to nominate Eleanor Love.
Okay, second, to nominate and appoint Eleanor Love for the District 1 Sacramento County Youth Commission, please vote, this is just my viewpoint.
Hang on a minute. Unanimous vote.
Okay.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay, we already did all the As in order of agenda, so we're now down to the Bs, so airports have to wait, no, I'm kidding, can we call the item again?
Okay, item 48, Department of Airports Workshop on Airport Status and Accept the Draft Final Sacramento International Airport Master Plan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Wheat.
Well, hi, how are you today? (laughing) Delight being here, and I'm here to make you happy.
Give it a try, I hope you're bringing money.
Thank you, Flo, let me just, a couple slides here, we have a presentation, I'll make it, I'll keep it fairly brief today, and then the other item was really an item we're requesting you to accept the draft master plan and send it off to Community Development for Environmental Review, so I'll, these are the topics we wanted to discuss today, update on our progress over the last three and a half years, give you where we are in negotiations with the air carriers, a little more discussion on the updates of transport, Transportation Network carriers, talk about possible revenue enhancements for 17, 18, and then a real quick marketing update, and then we'll go into the master plan presentation. If you go to the fourth slide, which is about three years ago, you'll recall, I met with most of you individually after we had done five-year financial projections, and we really established four objectives that we wanted to accomplish for the airport, one was to reduce airline costs to a CPE of $14, the other is to achieve a 15% operating expense reduction, the third one was to, you know, really look at our airport system plan and determine what needs to be done, or what we can do to improve the financial viability of our GA airports, and then work on our airline relationships, negotiating agreement, and ultimately improve service to broaden our passenger base. Wanted to share this slide with you, I think that this really does show what's happened in the last four years, and what the airport has really been able to accomplish, what the blue line, the blue bars show there is, in 2010, when the airport issued its last bond series, these were the finance, these were the expense projections from the feasibility study that went along with that bond issue, the red basically shows what we've been able to accomplish on the expense standpoint, obviously, anytime you're looking at projections, you're building in certain assumptions, things of that nature, we've been very successful in reducing costs, we have reduced staff by 22%, and one of the proudest things I think we have is that we've taken our executive group from a nine-member person down to a four level, to four people, so we've really flattened our organization, and then underneath that, we now have 22 managers who are reporting to those. On the next slide, this really kinda tells the tale as it relates to passengers, that's the rolling 12-month passenger totals, you can see, you're all familiar, 2007 was our record year, we continued to fall for various reasons, everyone else was falling, the recession was going on, airlines were merging, in 2014, however, we saw our first year increase 3.3%, in 2015, we saw 7.1% increase in passengers, and in 2016, a 5.3, a lot of people ask me, why is that, I'm gonna take all the credit, no, I'm joking. The real reason is, I think, that the airlines have responded to what we've been doing, and they've brought in additional seats, added new service, but probably the most important thing is that the economy is definitely picking up, and we're seeing an increase in disposable The other interesting thing is the 12, the rolling 12-month seat totals, now when you compare these two, we still see the same dip, but the big difference is, is back in 2008, the airlines were operating somewhere around a 68% to 72% load factor, if you fast-forward now to 2016 or 2017, those same airlines are operating at an 87% to 88% load factor, so while the seats have not come back to where they were, the load factors have drastically increased, as we're all pretty well aware of that when you fly. On the air service side, we've been fairly successful with regards to working with our air carriers, encouraging them to bring in service, but the most important thing is when they do bring in a new city, almost every time, this community reacts in a very positive manner, you know, you look up here where Southwest brought their service into Love Field in 2015, that is the most successful flight that Southwest operates out of Love Field, as far as a load factor, it's averages a little bit over 95%. You also notice that in Southwest, while they've added four cities, they, as well as other carriers, have brought in larger aircraft, so as they phase out the older 737s, they bring in the eights, the nines, and the new Maxes, those aircraft have approximately 30 to 45 more seats per aircraft, so they're growing, not only by adding frequencies, adding new cities, they're growing our seat capacity by adding larger aircraft coming into here. A prime example of that is with United, you'll recall, United used to operate quite a few flights to San Francisco with 12-seat aircraft, they've replaced those now, where SkyWest is flying those for United down to San Francisco with 50-seat RJ's.
Mr. Wheat, I had a question relative to the statement you made previously about the new Boeing 737 class, the 800s and 900s that are gonna have more seating capacity, how does that, how would that affect the efficiency slide you had earlier, the seat efficiency slide, where you've mentioned, we're now, the airlines are now generally at around 87%, if you have more seats on a plane, do the airlines that are gonna be using those newer model, Boeings, those newer Model 737s, are they somehow going to expect the same efficiency with more seats available?
Not only expecting, they are getting, as soon as they bring those aircraft in, there's, I mean, it's amazing, the Baltimore service, the Baltimore service, again, that flies pretty well sold out all the time, so the demand that's been created here because of the economy, and people are back flying a bit, whatever they seem to put into this market, it grows, and then, so they're really not seeing, when they bring in a 737 and add it to LA, a newer one, their load factors aren't decreasing, they're staying the same.
Now, obviously, aircraft is a pretty major investment for airlines, so that's one that's hard to be flexible with at times, does that, do you foresee that being a wise decision in terms of the ability to be nimble, and in terms of all the other aspects of what goes into filling those planes, whether it be pricing, or destinations, or frequency, that they can maintain that?
I think that the revenue management systems that the air carriers operate today are extremely sophisticated, and yet, I would have to answer, yes, I think that every action they take, they're not all going to larger aircraft, but you're seeing a lot, that's how they're growing the system nationally, the other side is, when you bring these new aircraft on, the efficiencies of these aircraft compared to the ones they're replacing that are 25 years old are night and day, they're almost 50% more fuel efficient.
They're quieter, too?
Yes, they are.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I always track that sometimes, this is a slide that you've seen, I'm sure, before, but we just wanted to share it with you again, it's our cost per and plane passenger, which is nothing more than a metrics that our industry uses to determine what we're charging air carriers, you can see our high in 13 and 14, we brought that down to 1545, the most recent audited numbers we had in 2016. Our outstanding debt, while still high, obviously is improving, because we continue to make our debt payments, as you'll recall, we issued, you know, we had a high of approximately 1.0, almost 1.15 million dollars in debt, or billion dollars in debt, that's now just a hair over 1 billion, and you can see that the cost per and plane, excuse me, the outstanding debt per and plane passenger, which is a metrics that is pretty important to the rating agencies, and how they really, you know, one of the major metrics they evaluate us on, while that has dropped from 250 to 200 dollars per passenger, we're still well above the national average, which is just a hair below 100 dollars, but we're definitely making progress associated with this.
That was a hair below 100 dollars?
Yes, it's about 98, I think it's like 98.57, something like that, about 98 dollars or something.
Double the average.
Yeah, yeah, but again, that's an average, okay, that takes in everybody and divides it by everybody, so, I mean, a lot of airports are, you know, in the same vicinity we are that have newer facilities. On the next slide, this is really our debt, our entire debt structure, the green bars representing our subordinate debt, which is paid for by our passenger facility charge collections that we receive on an annual basis, and the blue lines representing the debt, which we pay for from our earnings on an annual basis, we, as you guys are aware, we did do a refunding, and it was very successful, we saved about 2 million dollars a year, the good news as well is that come April 1st of 2018, if the rate structure, borrowing rate structure either maintains where it is or stays somewhat stable, we have another five, over 500, close to 580 million dollars of debt that we can call, the debt we issued in 2018, which based upon today's rates, we could probably save in the vicinity of another 5 to 6 million dollars a year. On the airline use agreement, that was one of the initiatives that we had in our four objectives, we met with the air carriers, we've started discussions on initiating a new agreement, as the board is aware, we currently operate by ordinance, and by going into a negotiation, there's an opportunity for us to reduce risk as also, as well as reduce their costs. What I'm showing you here is just what we've done to date, there are meetings scheduled between February 14th and 21st, where we'll be meeting with all of you individually and walking through the terms and whatever, so you can fully understand where we are at this point, but our last meeting was on January 23rd, we've pretty much agreed on all the business terms, and now we're just going through on a few minor wording changes. The assumptions, what I'd like to do is kinda share what the projections were that we ran for the air carriers when we began this negotiation, we ran five-year updated forecasts, these are the assumptions that we utilized, we anticipated a 1.6% landed weight increase, a 2.2% in passengers, our non-airline revenues would increase 3.6, and our operating expenditures would increase 3.2. I won't spend a whole lot of time, but what this is showing based upon those projections is that our total revenues would increase in, from 2017 to 173 million, to 193 in 2022, and our operating expenses would increase from approximately 95 million to 108 million over that same period of time, producing net revenues of 78 million 9 in 2017, and 85 million in 2022. Then, one of the things that we've negotiated, and we use, obviously, we use that money to pay for debt and things of that nature, and capital programs, one of the things that we are talking with the airlines and incorporating in their new use agreement is a revenue sharing component, and so these projections went through and did that, it shows our accrued, we then take our, we take our net revenues, we net out our debt service that we're paying on an annual basis from our earnings, we take out amortized capital, amortized capital improvements, and all that is, is that's the amortized cost of the investment that the airport is making with its funds on capital improvements that we're putting into their cost centers, capital outlays, we come up with our total non-operating expenses, and it leaves a net remaining revenues, what we're proposing to the air carriers is that we then enter into a revenue sharing agreement associated with that, that after we cover everything, if there are revenues left over, we'll share on a 60/40, and again, we'll walk into a lot more detail when we meet with you individually. But the slide I really wanted to focus on is this is the, this is the impact of what we're looking at right now as it relates to the use agreement that we're currently negotiating, the cost per and plane passenger, again, we're using a 2.2% increase in passengers, we're currently estimating 2017 to be about 1538, and come July 1st, 2017, which we'll be requesting that the new agreement go into place with your approval, we will drop those rates under 14 dollars and accomplish the goal that we set out about three and a half years to get taken care of, which we're very happy about. This is the remaining steps that we have, we have a meeting on the 16th, I mentioned I'll be meeting with the board between the 14th and the 21st, we have set the date of March 15th to attempt to finalize that agreement, we'll be coming to the board in May 7th for your approval with the least effective date of July 1st. I wanted to just spend a minute to giving you a brief update on the TNCs. We've talked to you previously about these, but if this phenomena continues to grow out at the airport, what we're showing here is ground transportation trips, the green line is representing the trips that are provided by our taxi cab, or out at the airport, Sitoa, the purple line is representing limos and other ground transportation trips that are coming to and from the airport, and the blue line is representing the TNCs, so it's pretty easy to see in September of 2015, when we had a 7.1% increase in passengers, that's when, that's when the TNC started, you can see what's happened, the actual month of November was the first month since they've been in here, that we've actually seen possibly a normalization tied to seasonal frequent, or seasonal activity at the airport, because they've just been on this whirlwind going straight up, we'll continue to track this, but there's no question that they, the frequency that's coming out there and the popularity that they're enjoying, we do not anticipate seeing a real lull or necessarily a normalization, it might happen, but we're, you know, still pretty confident that that's just going to continue to grow, what does that mean?
I'm sorry, John, and so you said, that chart only went to November, you have data now for December?
I don't, off the top of my head, well, yes, I do on the, nope, I have November's date.
All right, very good, Patrick, get a question?
Can you just change the slide, that's my question?
Oh, okay, okay.
Excuse me, on this slide, what we're showing is the Transportation Network Carrier Parking and Taxi Impact, and this is being shown on a transaction per passenger, okay, no, excuse me, it's a impact per transaction, so when you look at the blue line, again... So when you look at the blue line, again, that's the Citoa trips. You'll notice that in October of 2015, they represented 2.8% of the transactions between parking and ground transportation. They've now dropped to 2.1%. When you look at the site, when you look at the limos and the others, they've gone from a 3.9 to about a 4%. So they're staying, they're not being as impacted as immediate. Then you see the big impact of the blue, of the, excuse me, the purple line, which is showing the TNTs, TNCs, they now represent 9.5% of the transactions out at the airport. And that's transactions, parking transactions as well as charge, commercial ground transportation. The rest of it is people, other modes. And then you can see the impact of the parking. We've seen, we've been seeing a drop in number of transactions at the airport for the last two or three years. Although revenue continues to rise, we've seen some modifications on transactions. With the TNCs, that has continued, continued that trend. We're in, and as I mentioned, I think previously to this board, the big impact, the biggest impact we're seeing with the TNCs is on the hour to an hour and a half parker. Those transactions are down dramatically. But we're also starting to see impacts in all of our parking garages as they continue to grow. In our budget, we'll be presenting to the board, we're still working on these, we don't have any recommendations for you today, but we're looking at a couple of revenue enhancements. One of them is going to be our ground transportation fees. This just gives you an idea. We have not adjusted our ground transportation fees in 20 years, and it's shown pretty clearly on this chart right here. And those are the fees that we charge to our ground transportation operators at a buck 25. So we are evaluating that, will be in our budget and message as well as for that period of time, we'll be coming to the board with recommendation, a final recommendation with regard, for your consideration for increasing those revenues.
John?
Yes.
Sorry. This is Patrick? Since you don't have my name on there. Do we have the technology, is it through technology that we will be able to adjust the TNCs, ground transportation fees? I mean, is, how do we, how do we capture those?
The TNCs, basically, the agreements we have with the TNCs is they, they capture that data, Lyft or Uber sends us all of that data with the check, and then we have the opportunity to audit that off of their system.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have any, there's no technology onboard their vehicles?
Not on, not on there. It's all the other ground transportation providers.
So it's kind of an honor system at this point? I mean...
Well, it's an honor system, and, but we do have the opportunity to audit, which we anticipate fully taking advantage of that in the next year.
Okay.
Just so we can do it. But from an industry standpoint, most of the airports have gone to that. There are a couple of, there are, there is technology available that you can do that. It's an expense. But what we're seeing right now, and, you know, the best way for me to answer that is once we do an audit, I think that will give us our best recommendation should we be doing something different.
Okay.
Okay? Then the last slide on the revenue is just nothing more than a depiction of our current parking rates. As you all know, all of our lots that we have out there, we charge $2 every 30 minutes. So whether you're parking long-term, economy, whatever, you charge $2 for every 30 minutes until you reach the daily lot maximum, which is shown on this schedule.
You should get the city of Sacramento's parking consultant, see if you can raise those rates.
We are. No, we're, we're definitely looking at it, but, you know, we have to be fairly cautious with regards to how we, you know, how we set those rates, especially on the economy garage, or, excuse me, the economy lot. Because right now, we're very lucky, we have no off-airport competitors, and we want to make sure that we're not encouraging that type of activity to come out in Sacramento. But I think it's, it's pretty easy when you start looking at the garage and even the daily lot, those are things that we may want to consider, and we're continuing to evaluate those, and we'll be coming back to the board. And then the last item I have before we get into the master plan is just a quick marketing update. For those of you who don't know, we're going to be 50 years old come October 21st of this year. We're going to be doing a lot of social media, we're going to be doing a lot of, you know, publicity events, things of that nature, over the next eight months. And the whole, real purpose of this is to continue to generate, generate awareness of really our brand, and that being, you know, easy to use. Because we all know our, what our airport is, and we have a grand story to tell. So we're going to continue to drive that through our primary and secondary markets and reinforce the brand personality. And then on the 21st, we'll be throwing a small party out at the airport. You'll all get an invite, and hopefully all of you will be able to attend.
John, earlier this morning, we had the opportunity to recognize the Sacramento Bee for its 160th anniversary of publication, and obviously, they've covered events, but I think you might find it of interest if you are familiar, and certainly for those that are, it's still interesting that there was a lot of criticism about Sacramento, you know, metropolitan airport at the time, what it was called now Sacramento International, but basically that the locating of it out in middle of nowhere, and where Tulley Fog was, and, you know, about the property transaction, but there was a lot of criticism.
It was a very insightful decision, because it's paid off extremely well.
Well, but the board supervisor at the time took a lot of criticism for, I'll just tell you, so it might be an interesting note that 50 years, looking at what's around it now, the operations that you pointed out, and, you know, the employments and, you know, size and scope of that airport. But might be a little tidbit if people go back to newspapers, not just when they cut the ribbon, but I think just even leading up to the decisions, there was, you know...
One of the things we will be doing, too, we're going to be showing, you know, events over the last 50 years. That gives me a good idea, maybe what we should do is have some clippings from the time that we were, the board was talking about doing this new airport and having those on display as well.
We can always bring the previous supervisor to help with engineering architecture.
Yeah. Okay, the next, now, what we're really here for, and we wanted to talk to you about, was the, we have an agenda item on the board to, like I say, accept our draft master plan and submit it to economic development for their review, environmental review, and then we'll come back to the board for final discussion and final approval. So I'd like to turn it over to TJ Chen. I think you've all met him, but for those of you who haven't, TJ Chen is our new chief operating, chief administrative officer over planning, development, and facilities at the airport. He's one of those four that I referred to. We've got a pretty new group out there. I've got myself, TJ, Lisa, who's been with us for quite a while, and then Sylvia Ambrosio, who came on about a year ago. So I'll turn it over to TJ.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's my first I presented to the board, so certainly appreciate the opportunity of your time. Just gonna go back real quick. Again, my presentation is really to support the agenda item on asking the board to accept the draft finals master plan for Sacramento International Airport. And I'll go right into it. Master plan is really just a 20-year plan, very similar to a city council's, city or county's general plan, but for the airport master plan, just focused on the airport itself. And we look at what the airport needs to do in the next 20 years, and plan out what are some development that needs to take place to continue to support the operation at airport. The previous master plan was completed in 2007. And if you ask what we do to have another master plan update so quickly, it's mainly after the big bill, which was the focus of the previous master plan. A lot has, a lot has happened, and we wanted to take an opportunity to look at with the change in the economic environment and how we view the future economic growth at the airport, we'll have the opportunity to look at what improvement are needed to support our future growth. And for the master plan, we primarily focus on eight areas focused, the airfield, the terminal, general aviation, air cargo, rental cars, support facilities, mainly, or main is support facilities, parking, ground transportation. And for this presentation, I only will really focus on three of those areas, the airfield, the terminal, and parking. Part of the master plan is look at existing land use, which is basically take a very general look. We have a separate document, is the airport land use compatibility plan, that look at land use more, more closely, but for the master plan purpose, we essentially validate what was depicting the previous master plan. There's no major changes with our existing land use, and we'll continue forward with the existing land use. Big part of the airport master plan is to really to look at forecasts based on historical trends, based on the aviation industry, and also to look at guidance provided by FAA. So in this graph, the graph on the left is the historical passenger count. This, uh, chart itself, it's just for the in-plane passengers. I have another chart that talks about airplane operations. So for, on the left side is the historical data of in-plane passengers, and the right is our forecast. The green line that's kind of in the middle part is part of our 2007 airport master plan forecast. As you can see, it has a far more aggressive growth projection. And on the right, the orange red line is what we're projecting under, what FAA projected in their own 2012 forecast. The blue dash line is what we're projecting for the airport in the, for the next 20 years. And we're projecting a 2.9% employment passenger growth rate for the next 20 years. That's slightly higher than what John just projected for financial projection purpose. The reason for that is we have to, for capital improvement plan purpose, we have to be a little bit more, more optimistic in our employment growth. The next chart, it depicts the aircraft operations. Again, historical data is on the left, along with the projection in the 2007 master plan. What we're projecting is on the right, the dash line again, is what we projected under this airport master plan, and the red line is the FAA, they call the terminal, terminal airport forecast. It's fairly consistent, and we're required by FAA to have our projection fairly consistent with FAA projection as part of our master plan development. So with that, with the forecast information, we started developing what improvements or project we need to evaluate in the next 20-year horizon. Again, we divided...
TJ, let me just ask you, you left that chart, so, and I know you briefed on this, but is there a point, again, it may be well out there, and this is a 20-year master plan, but using the forecast that was the 2007 pre-recession and the historic, excuse me, the, the graph that, chart that you're using now, is there a point that you could foreseeably see out where those would intersect, where you could still get to, because, because the green couldn't go forever, although it anticipated a third runway and additional capacity, employments and so forth. Is there, if you projected those out, a place, they don't just keep going like this? Because someplace you reach capacity, and is there any analysis that was done around that?
Right. If you're talking about compared to 2007 forecast and the 2014 forecast, I don't believe there's a point where the two will intersect, because the 2007 forecast was, was projected at even much more aggressive growth pattern compared to right now. The, the negative 1.4%, I think that is more depicting the downturn, historical information. But we don't, based on our forecast currently, the 2014 airport master plan, we don't see that aggressive growth where it will surpass the 2007 forecast, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, but 2007 wasn't just going to keep going into the atmosphere. I mean, at some point, it would have to, you would get to a point where, and that's, you know, we look at these at 20 years, so looking at...
Can you get closer to the microphone?
Excuse me, trying to get out 40, 50, 60 years when these ever meet. The real difficulty with that is we have no idea what technology is going to be. And so it's a very difficult question to answer, honestly, because historically, what's happened is we've seen more efficiency, we've seen larger aircraft. If that trend continues, then, you know, they really won't, if they won't, if all of a sudden, everybody goes to smaller aircraft, possibly.
Okay. Well, and the reason I asked the question, again, I know that in brief, we talked about it, but, and you're going to get to in a moment, you know, what the, you know, some of the major changes in the master plan.
Right.
And how you propose to accommodate, and that's on this slide here, but we spent a lot of time in these chambers and, you know, spent a lot of money, both airport money and certainly time and staff, looking at options and talking about how we might accommodate, you know, that third parallel runway. And obviously, you've got a plan that would, you know, take on that capacity without having to do that. And I didn't want to get ahead, I just wanted to be sure, because once you foreclose, once you close that door, you know, but none of our successors is going to revisit that, I can almost assure you of that, so...
Absolutely. We take major developments, analysis of major developments very seriously, especially a major development from the past. So let me just go real quick. This just depicts the areas of improvement that we plan to do, to answer your question, is really our next slide. It's, you're talking about dual runway. In our current master plan, we not only analyze forecasts, but also analyze our current airfield capacity. It's not depicted in the slide, but in our actual master plan itself, we do have that analysis. Currently, with our dual runway system, we can handle capacity at about 400,000 operations per year. That's what, what our consultants telling us, based on the current configuration. With our operate, aircraft operation forecast, currently, we're just slightly under 200,000 operations. Even within the 20-year projection, we will never reach our maxing capacity of 400 operations per year. And that's the main reason why we decided to take the third runway off our current master plan update, because it's, it's difficult for us to place development that we don't see justify or will realize within the next 20-year timeframe, within the timeframe of this master plan. And also, part of our project plan to do is the taxiway A is the parallel taxiway for our main runway that has our category three instrument landing system. By optimizing that runway, we will also gain some efficiency and capacity with our main runway that also adds to the overall runway capacity. So even, in addition to the taxiway, with the taxiway improvement, the capacity that comes along with that, is a decision that within this 20-year horizon, within this master plan, we decided to take the third runway out of this master plan. Doesn't mean that we can add in the future, it's just what we could see right now, it certainly doesn't justify the third runway at this point. And other project within the, on the airfield is a runway extension. It's depicted, which, in the master plan itself, it gives us option on which runway and to place the extension in the future. That's based on multiple, more analysis and also really based on demand by the airlines. For the terminal, as we continue to grow, terminal project recommendations is really based on the passenger growth. The master plan recommends that we continue to maintain where we are right now, two separate terminal environment, Terminal A and Terminal B. And if passenger continue to grow, we have capacity to add additional bags of planes in Terminal B. Right now, we have four, we have, easily can add two more to accommodate the additional passenger growth. And as well as, we also look at the automated people mover. Right now, it's a two-track, single car system. If there's passenger capacity needs, we simply add one additional car to each, each track that will allow us accommodate the passenger growth in the future. As well as our gates on the concourse, the master plan allows additional gates to be added to either concourse, either concourse A or concourse B, depending on the need and discussion with the airlines. And land side recommendations, this is the third part of the, of the focus, really focus on parking. We have a parking study on the go, on the way right now, to really look at how do we optimize the parking that's at the airport at this point. And we're also looking at building an intermodal transportation hub just right in front of the Terminal B. So as passenger come to the airport, whether it's coming from our shuttles, or whether it's being dropped out by TNCs or taxis... it's being dropped out by TNCs or taxis, they'll be dropped out in front of Terminal B so it become more intuitive as they get off their vehicles, they see the terminal, they see the escalator and they see the different floors within terminals. So become, as they travel through the airport to reach the gates, become more intuitive and increase some efficiency of the use of the Terminal B. And also we plan some curves and improvements during the holiday, we see some congestion, spots of congestion along the curves on Terminal B. There are some smaller projects, what we could do to improve that. And lastly is we will continue to maintain the regional transit light rail alignment. That was part of the previous master plan, we will continue to maintain that. We have ongoing meeting with both FAA, the FTA and as well as regional transit to continue to reserve that alignment for the future light rail transit that will be coming to the airport. And the next steps, obviously we need to initiate this environmental review process with PER. As I mentioned, we have started the parking study and we also do some, we have also started some preliminary analysis on the long-term support facilities such as our vehicle maintenance facility, our landscape teams, equipment maintenance facility. I mentioned about the taxiway Alpha or A optimization plan that's within our five-year CIP. And lastly is our airport environmental susten- sustainability management plan, which is already underway. It is something that we have done quite a bit of work at the airport that we're very proud of. We want to continue that to be a more measurable and achievable plan that's also consistent with our master plan for the next 20 years. And with that, that's our presentation for the master plan.
Questions? All right. You got through your first presentation, you're now a veteran.
Yeah, it's an experience. I definitely appreciate the time.
Be easy. Okay, all right.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Mr. Chair. There aren't any questions up here, by the way, because we were all pretty well briefed recently. But, you know, kudos to the airport staff for continuing to really do some great things out there.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I'd certainly add my thanks to John and all his very capable staff. And I'm going to thank you in advance because I know we're going to all do a wonderful job in coordinating various outreach efforts in the months to come with the most part of the district I represent and the neighborhood I live in relative to operations, and that's a whole nother, different presentation. But during our briefing, we had a good conversation about how best to, quite frankly, do a better job through my office and through airports to get ahead of some of those operation issues before they sometimes get misconstrued or misunderstood by my constituents. So we're going to work together and make sure that we do our best to educate folks about what might be changed in terms of operations.
I think part of the message too, because there was quite a contingent of folks when we talked about, again, related certainly to operations, to noise and traffic impacts, air traffic in particular, but on the third runway, since that's now being eliminated from the master plan, that wasn't, there was no easily arrived at decision at the time in that master planning process. And so I would just indicate that maybe something you want to reach out to folks, I'm sure you got some mailing lists that you could dust off and invite them to, at least to be advised, if nothing else, of what the new plan is. All right, any other comments? Then we do have action out before us and acknowledging certain the presentation, the comments. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, move a second then to accept the draft final segment on our national airport master plan and forward to Department of Community Development for the SEQA analysis. Anything else? I don't want, anyone here want to speak to this item, item 48? All right, please.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Take it back. Thank you. TJ, thank you, John. Back to item 45, and then we do have an offsite speaker, Cindy's been here, appreciates your patience and we'll get to you in a moment. So item 45, if you'll call it, Phil.
Item 45 is the transient occupancy tax allocation policies and processes.
Okay, Mr. Ferguson, you've been in and out all day long and now it's your time.
I had to cross out the good morning part of my presentation.
Almost got the good evening, not quiet.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Brett Ferguson, the county's chief financial officer. As you're well aware, since 1964, the county has imposed a transit occupancy tax on those staying in hotels, motels in the unincorporated portion of the county. This is discretionary revenue and like all discretionary revenue, whether it's property tax or sales tax, it can be allocated to any public purpose based on your board's priorities. Historically, this money has been used for a number of purposes and generally until about 10 years ago, it was really used in three ways. One was to fund a number of organizations or programs on a pretty continuous basis such as the Chamber of Commerce and other, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and things like that. Secondly, it was used, each year there was a process that was conducted to allocate that money by soliciting proposals from community organizations. And third, it was used to fund the sort of the general net county cost of all general fund programs to help balance the general fund budget. About 10 years ago, as the economy turned down, the money, the annual process, a competitive process of soliciting proposals ended and for the most part, the money was used to fund sort of an ongoing group of programs that we've sort of labeled civic services like the Chamber of Commerce, like Convention and Visitors Bureau, like the Metropolitan Arts Commission, as well as to fund certain economic development activities and a few projects that arose such as funding proposed for the Powerhouse Science Center and other. And then to, again, help offset the general net county cost, the general general fund cost of county programs. Your, members of your board requested that staff come back and try and find a way to reinstitute at least to some extent the process of providing an opportunity to go through a public process of soliciting proposals to fund needs that might arise during the year. And that's what we've come before you today to outline what we suggest is a process and of course, the ultimate decision will be your boards as to how you want to proceed. In summary, what we're proposing, let me just also note that basically in 1617, we budgeted to get about 5.4 million in TOT revenue. About 2.6 million of that was dedicated to specific projects and the cost of administration and programs and organizations. And about 2.8 million was used to fund general net county costs, so about 50/50 was what was done this year. And that's been pretty typical for the last few years. So the proposal that we put together would include sort of the following general parameters. Each year, we'd set aside $3.5 million for dedicated projects or programs such as, I'll get into that in a moment. And the remaining TOT revenue would be treated as general discretionary resources to fund that county cost. Each year, of course, your board would have the opportunity to revise that number and add to it or reduce it, and we might recommend an additional reduction based on circumstances, general fiscal conditions and so forth, or identified opportunities, but that would be the general intent. With one exception, there'd be no funding changes made to the existing TOT civic programs. Again, that's things like civic organizations that have historically been funded, like the Arts Commission, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and so forth. The one exception to that would be the 287,000 in this year's budget that was set aside for the Powerhouse Science Center. That was set aside based on the Powerhouse Science Center setting, meeting certain conditions. Thus far, they have not met those conditions and so we're recommending that that not be set aside in the future. They could always come back and submit a proposal like anybody else under our proposal, but it doesn't make sense to us to continue to set aside money absent some indication that they're likely to be presenting a proposal that would meet those criteria. We would also not propose any changes to the amount set aside for the community service and neighborhood programs. That's the roughly, well, that's the $120,000 allocated to each district that your board individually makes funding decisions about, so that would remain the same. Continue to provide $90,000 to fund economic development and market activities, but in addition to that, add an additional $100 million to provide targeted support for economic development.
$100 million? Not $100 million.
Excuse me, $100.
He just went out and hired 50 people.
Sorry.
You must be counting those jail savings in your.
I'm sorry, $100,000 to, thank you, to provide.
We'll take those three zeros right now.
To provide targeted support for economic development initiatives, and this is an initiative that's been identified by economic development. As you know, things come up throughout the year and there's a need to have that flexibility to address those in the economic development business. We're proposing to increase the program in administrative costs from the current 90,000 annually to $200,000. That's in part to address the cost of administering these new competitive program that I'm going to talk about, but also because frankly, the amount that's been collected in the past has not been sufficient to cover the cost of the board's money and the other funding that's provided. And then, then continue to fund the Department of Finance for things like audit and so forth at the same level. And then finally, in this regard, to add a new TOT grant program that would provide $1 million annually to be allocated to community organizations through a competitive process. We've also suggested that one principle, again, subject to annual decisions about funding, would be that if one dedicated project category is increased in any year, it will be offset by a decrease in another category with the idea that if you don't do that, what's going to happen is eventually everything could potentially be dedicated and then there won't be any money to go through the competitive process. So with regard to the TO grant program itself, the $1 million, we proposed a sort of a process and policy, and that would involve the following. We would do an application process, conduct an application process annually with awards for the upcoming fiscal year made in coordination with the county's annual budget process. Funds could be awarded for one or two years, but with no more than 50% of the funds allocated for two years. And that's so that basically there might be opportunities that come up between a two-year period and you don't want to not be able to address those, so there's some flexibility to do that. Funds would be awarded to a grantee, must be spent for the year awarded, they will not be carried over from year to year. So the idea is, we want, we want the grantees to spend those. So if it's a two-year grant, it would come out of two years' allocation. We wouldn't try and keep track of carrying money over for two years. Again, your board could always make an exception to that if there were some exigent circumstance. The proposals can be for any public purpose. We're not, we're not suggesting that there be any elaborate criteria or priority set at this point, but the grantees must be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit agency. The minimum contract amount will be $20,000 as we're proposing, again, just because of, there's a lot of administrative costs in doing this and because your board does have money that you can also allocate for smaller projects in your districts. And the maximum amount will be 50% of the total amount being allocated in that year. And that would again be to make sure that there's some flexibility in meeting a variety of needs. The grantee would be required to enter into a funding agreement with the county and funding will be processed on a reimbursement basis. The grantees would be subject to a county audit, that would be part of the agreement. Proposals that include matching funds from an outside entity would receive a priority consideration. We don't identify any specific numerical priority, but just that those would be given priority, some priority consideration. That staff would advertise the TOT grant program, open an application process through county newsletters, social media, local chambers of commerce and county website posting. We're ready to proceed with that once you approve this program or revise program. They would submit, the applicants would submit funding proposals through either our, my office, the Office of Financial Management, or the Office of Economic Development. We've left that a little flexible to sort of over time, see where that might best lie. Initially, it would be through the Office of Economic Development, as was the case in the past. Staff will verify proposals meet the minimum criteria. And then we're proposing that a review committee made up of the five supervisory districts' chief of staff be designated to evaluate and rate the grant proposals and make funding recommendations to the board of supervisors. The recommendations would come back then to your board in coordination with the county's budget process and you would make the ultimate decision. And the decision to, the recommendation regarding using the chiefs of staff is sort of, we looked at this as in two different possible ways. One would be to establish some fairly specific criteria, get direction from your board on priorities, on areas to focus on. And then under that approach, it's possible staff could do some analysis of that. Alternatively, we thought what made more sense though was to give you as much flexibility as possible and not establish elaborate criteria, but instead rely on your designated chiefs of staff to conduct that initial evaluation and make a recommendation to you. That gives you the most flexibility in the end.
Brett, if you just could, for a moment here, I was surprised that Kennedy wanted to ask a question and.
Sure.
One question, you said that the Powerhouse. It's the center, thank you, Chair. The 287,000 didn't meet the criteria now. Is this for, this is for the upcoming budget cycle, you're recommending it not be in there?
It would not be, it would not be included in the, in the, in the funding that's sort of already committed because as you recall, there was a fairly lengthy list of conditions that were placed on the Powerhouse Science Center and they were, starting with this fiscal year, at the beginning of this fiscal year, they did not meet those conditions, but we kept it set aside in the idea that they might. So far, we have not received any proposal from them. And again, we don't think it's, you know, it's prudent to just keep holding that money aside. They could always come in and make a proposal and you could consider funding it out of the million dollars.
I think you could probably expect that, they're pulling permits next month, so.
That, well.
I think they'll meet a lot of the criteria, so, okay.
If I could, Brett, just, and I know you want to wind up, I just wanted, as you've gone down through a lot of material, just back on your bullet points you just covered. As far as the advertisement, I think there's, we mentioned local chambers of commerce, that may be great for economic development or for some community project, but I think there's a number of other sources you can go to, whether it's, you know, historical societies, there's associations in the county, there's your museums, there's your, I think even your, some of your public agency partners, like the libraries and maybe even, you know, sometimes school districts have an innovative project, they want to do a garden, they may not have a nonprofit. And so I will just say that as we get into discussion, I want to kind of talk about that. I think you want to open the playing field for nonprofits who may not have a good competitive edge otherwise, but sometimes there are partnerships and it may not always involve a nonprofit. The nonprofit certainly may be the provider and maybe you're going to have a real wealth of them in this, in this process. But excuse me, if you're going to open this up, that there, you know, maybe some opportunities in cultural, civic, recreational and certainly in community enhancement projects that could involve more than just the 501(c)(3). That may be a key piece of it, but not the only piece. I just wanted to offer that comment. And I know you've given a lot of thought to this.
And we had discussed this a little bit yesterday evening, and I do agree with that. I think this is narrow, chambers of commerce, anything else we can get, get the message out, we will absolutely keep that in mind.
And as far as qualifying for that too, I mean, because it says very explicitly in bullet number, I guess five or six on page four, that grantees must be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit agency and that may or may not be too confined depending on what we want to do, but as I mentioned, there are other partners and, you know, that we may look to that may not have that status, but maybe doing good work, public works, maybe of a modest amount. And I can think of even library recently with some of the community funds that we're funding some of those workshops with a group to SAC City, but the library is the funding recipient, working then with probation department and with SAC City on their robotics program. And ultimately, putting that all together, the pieces in your offices were helpful, Brett. I just use as example, though, it's a modest amount, but, okay, so I appreciate that you'll follow up on that. And I have Phil and then Sue Frost, and you're not going to get all the way through before we start asking questions, Brett, so just, and Susan Peters, so.
It's all right.
We're all lined up. So anything else you want to conclude with, otherwise we're going to go right to the speakers.
Can I just briefly mention what our intended timing was, assuming that you approved this evening? And that would be, the initial grant application period would be February 14th through March 30th, so we'd give about 45 days opportunity and engage in the outreach that you've suggested, have initial screening, March 31st through April 14th, have a review committee review, April 17th through May 12th, notify those who are being recommended, May 15th through 26th in that period, and then bring it to the board at budget hearings, which are scheduled for June 13th through 15th. As proposed, just to recap then what this would mean in terms of the money, assuming about, again, about 5.4 million next year, which is probably a reasonable assumption, there would be about 3.5 million then that would be allocated either to existing programs, to the money that goes to the districts, to administration and to the new program. And then 1.9 million would be available to fund general fund net county costs, which would be about a $900,000 reduction.
Okay. All right, thanks Brett for your presentation. So we'll hold there, let's go to questions, who has a Serna, Frost and Peters, followed by Kennedy and Anatoly, I'm sure, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brett, thank you for your work on this, and to others that have put obviously a lot of thought into, I think, a very singular, yet intricate and somewhat complex process as it relates to the $1 million. In my briefing with Nancy and with Nav about this, I made it clear that I know I understand, and I would suspect others do as well, that from the county executive's perspective, the need for, and certainly from Brett's perspective, the need for certainty, for budgeting purposes, especially around this time of year, as we get closer to budget discussions in earnest, you're going to want to know how much of that rare discretionary funding you actually have available to cover net general fund costs. So that's understandable. I have no, I don't debate that at all. I guess what I do debate is, and that's the reason why I won't be able to support this in its current form tonight, and will hopefully get some support relative to sending you back for a little more work on this, is what I had hoped for was giving us, as we have asked for on many other, on many other occasions, options, different options, different alternatives for how the $1 million might be appropriated in some systematic way. I mean, you've given us one, so you've got kind of, you know, option one, but I gotta believe there's at least an option two and an option three out there, and we kind of brainstormed during my briefing about what some of those might look like. I didn't see the county executive necessarily objecting. I think that his disposition is pretty clear that that's a policy decision for us to make. And so, again, while I think, you know, good work has been done thus far, it represents just one option. And I would also like to suggest that, you know, this body, as much as we tout the fact that it's a grand all-funds budget that we are asked to grapple with every year, the largest in our region, largest inland northern California, in fact, for a local government, when it comes to discretion, true discretionary funding, it's a very small universe relative to the size of the organization, relative to the size of the all-funds budget. Here we are talking about $1 million in an almost $4 billion all-funds budget. So what I'm leading up to is the fact that I want to be able to exercise the discretion on that, even as it relates to, you know, how we get to a place of advising how best to use those monies collectively or individually, meaning, and then this is no disrespect to my own chief of staff or to others, I could foresee, and the option that's been presented today, that there might actually be respective differences of opinion between chiefs of staff and their supervisor on how best to spend or to appropriate these funds, just because there may be a missed nuance in terms of understanding some of the histories of the organizations that might benefit from these funds. I mean, a whole host of things could be, could be missed or lost in translation within each of our supervisory districts, and so I think that poses a problem for me. So in other words, I would like to see an option where the entirety of the process is left at this dais, and not left to some advisory role for others to play. I think we need to think carefully about that. So that, too, is something that I gave a preview of coming attractions to Nav and Nancy during my briefing, that I would be making the statement, but I think that that is something for, if it's the will of the board today, to send you back to do some more work, that you might consider in terms of shaping at least another option, if not a third or a fourth.
Okay, Sue Frost.
So my concern about this is, over the last couple months, and I'm new, but it seems like there's a whole lot that we need to do, but there's never enough money, and we're talking about initiatives around drug addiction and homelessness, and the legalized marijuana, and mental health, and the sheriff, and RCCC, and there's all these things coming, and then whispers of a potential coming recession, and still, we haven't paid back money that we borrowed from our own funds from the recession, and now we're setting ourselves up for a two-year grant program that is wonderful. I'm all for economic development, but my concern is that we're setting ourselves up for a program that sets up expectations and commits money in a direction that we may have to, we may not be able to sustain, and all at a time when we're still, we still have a mountain to climb when it comes to social services and public safety, and all that is intertwined, and those priorities kind of do need to have some discretion, that full discretion as to how we're going to spend it. And so my concern with this is that, not that I don't want to be able to create those kind of programs where we can issue grants to nonprofits, because that's one of the things in my campaign that I said I wanted to do. I want to be the wind under the wings of those community organizations, because government can't do it all, but we don't have a whole lot of money to do what we do need to do. And so I have a hard time supporting it for that reason, that we're setting up an expectation that I'm afraid we're not solid yet, we're not on solid ground to be able to set up those kind of expectations. And I also, I haven't been through the budget process with you folks, but I'm trying to figure out how Nav is going to maneuver that budget, because a whole lot of increases are being thrown at us, and I'm thinking, where is all the money coming from? I hope the money's coming. So I think that's the challenge that I have at this time with this proposal, and the reason I don't think I can support it.
Okay. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I recognize your concern, and I think $1 million is too large to start with on this. I'm okay allocating maybe half that for a program like this. If times get better, then we can always go to a larger number, but it seems like, similar to what Supervisor Frost said, we have a lot of unexpected things coming at us. When we do do it, one of the criteria, I think, needs to be a geographical spread. The money is coming from the unincorporated area, and this is TOT, and I'd like to see a better spread into the unincorporated area with the nonprofits, and something I talked to SMAC about every year, that the, many of the arts groups are city of Sacramento-centric. I don't have any problem with the city of Sacramento, it isn't that, but they have their own funding sources, and so, want to make sure that we move that, try and inspire non-city of Sacramento nonprofits to do better. And I do like the chief of staff model. I think this is going to be very time-intensive, and I don't want to be here for two days trying to decide amongst people and groups in a public setting.
Like we used to do in the old days, because it wasn't two days.
I don't like that, Don.
I know, I'm just saying, that's what it was.
I'm sorry, I did have a couple of smaller questions. In the funding categories, you have TOT program administration at $200,000. That just sounds like a lot of money to administer this program, so how is that going to be? Is Troy getting a raise?
That's Troy.
Or what?
I thought we just had $100 million.
Yeah, well, you don't know. You've got that $100 million, yeah. And as long as you're going to be answering this, you could probably talk about $190 million for $100,000, $190,000. I'm about, John infected me with the $100 million. $190,000 in economic development, marketing, and support.
Sure. So over this period of time, as Britt had mentioned, there are three components to this. There are the civic programs, the neighborhood funds, and most recently, the community services programs. So over that time period, with the addition of dollars that have been added into the program, as well as the new program for community services, we've had a dramatic increase in the number of contracts we administer. So for instance, in 2005, 2006, we administered 83 contracts. This year, we're on pace.
How many?
Eighty-three. This year, we're on pace to administer 350 to 400 contracts. So we've had a dramatic increase in costs.
I have a suggestion on how it could be made easier. Reduce the paperwork involved in receiving a check from TOT. It's, what is it, 20 pages of forms to fill out or something to get $2,000?
We've worked with county council on that process. We're looking at hopefully moving that online.
Ridiculously complicated.
I would agree with your assessment on that.
You'd save in postage mailing all the forms out. Go ahead.
So involved in that, we have the drafting of the contracts, the overly excessive 20-page contract, the coordinating with the recipients, the executing the agreements, and the payments for those, and tracking the budgets for all of those processes as well. So if there is a new additional fourth component to this, and we have, we have additional contracts and an additional competitive process, we expect the cost to administer this to continue to rise.
Is this additional people for $200,000? Are you hiring a couple people, or?
We wouldn't be hiring a couple people. We would be potentially hiring an additional person. But as it stands now, to administer the 350 to 400 contracts that we have now, it's about $180,000 a year.
I'm stunned. I don't know quite what to say about that. I'll think about it and get back to you on that. And then what about the other $190,000? This looks like, is it new money?
He's talking about the extra $100,000 for economic development. The targeted, the targeted support is, those are funds that would be set aside to address projects that come up in the middle of the year. If the sports commission has a sponsorship opportunity that the board has endorsed and would like to activate, if those funds are not spent, that would potentially roll into the general fund. So those are not allocated, but they're set aside for events that may come up.
So targeted support is events, and marketing is putting our logo on chamber of commerce events?
It's sponsorship of events, sponsorship and coordination with GSAC and others.
And audits for $50,000? Sounds like Jeopardy. Audits for $50,000?
Audits for $50,000. That is something that is typically done on the TOT. They audit generally a couple, they potentially audit a couple of hotels per year.
Oh, this is hotel audits?
Yes, that's correct.
Last I heard, we were years behind in that and really weren't doing it.
We have stepped up and have an internal audit. They are going back out and getting caught up on it.
We funded it every year. We funded it every year, why would we be behind?
We had, at one point, I think the funding had gone down, then funding, we came to the board, you upped the funding, and we put that back on the work plan.
Okay.
Well, seems like that 50 ought to be able to be included in the 200 administration or something like that. Then the Music Circus debt service is $66,000. Do we know what year that ends?
Pretty soon.
So that is no longer actually debt service. As you know, that, that, we're no longer part of the music service. They refinanced, and we're no longer. But as part of that, there was a, there was a sort of a commitment that we would continue to provide ongoing funding at the $66,000 level. It's not, it's not really anymore for debt services, just ongoing funding.
At impnitem?
I'm sorry.
Forever?
There's no, I mean, there's, there's not, there's no legal obligation to go on forever, but there was no talk about not continuing it.
Okay. All right. I realize I could have had those conversations of the budget, but I just wanted you to know. I'd really like to see some more detail on those things.
Understood.
Okay, I know Phil's punched up. I just wanted to, while Troy's there, and just a general comment, I had some specifics, but I'll let colleagues talk to him first, but I wanted to say that I think this discussion day is, again, long overdue. We've had it a couple of times, but I do like to act, and maybe to something that Supervisor Frost said, it doesn't so much, you know, pertain to the amount, or even to any processes being talked about here. I think allowing this board, before these dollars are all basically plugged in, again, Britt and his folks doing their work, so that in the event that we want to, any given year, and again, we can have that conversation, we will, depending upon what we do with this, but, you know, again, some of the more difficult times, but it got to be just assumed that all the money was budgeted, and then if we wanted to call back for whatever particular purpose, even in the budget context of wanting to support one departmental need over another, it was pretty locked in, and there wasn't much ability for the five of us, with, you know, community input, and certainly staff input, to really juggle that to any degree. And so I think, certainly this is a reflection of, I think, conversations over many years, and I want to thank you, Nav, and certainly staff, for bringing this to us, whatever iteration we come up with or not. I think it's an important conversation going into budgeting to know, at least from the standpoint of a plug number, certainly gives Britt and his folks, you know, more or less to work with, but I think it's important, because I think it retains the ability in a fund that has had a good deal of discretion under, certainly under good budgeting practices for decades now, and has, you know, served to support a lot of general fund needs, but also community needs and a variety of things. And so, again, I'm pleased that you got this before us, and thank you for bringing it to us. And I've got some specific questions, but let me go to my colleagues. Susan, did you have anything else?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, Phil, you're up.
Yeah, just a quick question to dovetail off of Susan's question about the $200,000. Does that $200,000 reflect the fact that there'd be higher administrative costs for a somewhat complicated process associated with the $1 million?
Who is partially in anticipation of that, yes.
So if we add a simpler way of appropriating that, and as was mentioned, I totally agree on the check-cutting protocols, they got to get simpler. It seems to me that that's where you could find some cost savings, correct?
That's a possibility.
I think the $200,000 also, what we're anticipating is costing us $190,000 to process the existing money that we give out, so we're.
Which is amazing. I mean.
Yeah, when he told me that.
20% overhead.
Yeah, in private sector, it's 4% to 6% max, so.
So part of us anticipated is, given the criterias that we put out there, that to get that money out, just the administrative function of getting the contract signed, getting the checks issued, that's what that money represents, not the upfront side on it. This is more push the money out, is what we're anticipating, this $200,000. Again, when Troy said this, I did agree to put that in the staff report, but also the caveat that I would like to get a little bit of a time and material study on it, and then as we get into the budget, if you need to make adjustments, make the adjustments, to see if we need to go down on that money. So that's, I know Troy doesn't like hearing that, but it's more like a plug number, but I do see the justification that he brought forward to it. But it is a number that we're going to look very closely. Whatever we do with this billion, but even with the other money that we're pushing out, it's a pretty big nut at this point. We would like to shave that down.
All right. Patrick, any other comments? I'm just offering a couple of quick comments then to this, and it sounds like we're kind of a bit over the map here today. Certainly, if folks want to have different iterations, you know, again, we've had conversations over many months, but I'm certainly not to delay it, because I think there was a process here that would actually would have started next Tuesday and begun the clock running, but if we need to take a couple more weeks, then we may have to compress that, or, you know, adjust that, depending upon what we choose to do. I guess I would just offer this, though, that I'm not, again, there are a couple of things here that I would speak to specifics, but relative to the process, at least to the one that existed some years ago, not to have the two days in session necessarily, that's, I understand that, but I think one that has a pretty open competition, and again, in my view, I'll just share this, is that it's not just limited to nonprofits, you know, I want to focus there, but that, you know, and it's not limited to geographical areas, that, you know, whether you're in a city, or... a city, or in, whether it's the city of Sacramento, or one of the other six cities, or in the unincorporated area, and whether you're, you know, a public entity that, you know, might have something that would direct itself to children, or to, to activities, to supporting efforts that the county either, you know, embraces or, or not. I, I think there's a wide opportunity. Again, these aren't unlimited dollars, and whatever number we choose, it certainly, there'll be much more, I'm sure, demand and request for it than we have in any given year. But, I think it's healthy. I think it allows us to look at the civic and cultural, as well as the, you know, I think aesthetic impacts, you know, aesthetics in the sense of, of how we relate to our communities and, you know, reinvest in different ways. And so, there's a whole combination here. I think this leaves kind of an open slate for us to, to consider. But, I, but I do like the idea that we can have a competitive process. I've said this before, and we had these discussions two or three years ago, that, again, I'm not uncomfortable, because I think that if, you know, we can, you know, try this out, and if we don't like it, obviously, we have the ability to, to, you know, do it in a different way. But, if it's too confining and/or too open-ended, and I guess that's the balance you're trying to achieve here, it can be either more difficult, more costly, and more frustrating, I guess, for us, as well as for, for others. And so, whatever we decide on, I think we ought to do something pretty short, short order. And, if, again, if it doesn't work, from a standpoint of either budgeting, or from the standpoint of, you know, the constituencies, but the county constituent, constituent will see that we view, then, you know, we can come back and, and change it. And again, I think having processes, though, that are auditable and hopefully simplified, but, but also ones that hopefully reflect community needs and community investment that we'd like to see, and whether it's a half million, a million or more, or, or something less than that. I think this is a, you know, a wise way to approach it, and gives this board and future boards the ability to, to look at any given budget year. And, so, I could go through without, again, more detail, but I know the hour's late. So, it sounds like there was a desire to maybe continue for a couple of weeks, to kind of keep, you know, working on this, have more conversations, obviously with NAV and Britt and Troy, and, and then come back. I think we should expect, though, by the end of February, we come back, because if we're gonna do a budget year, if we're gonna give some direction, if it is gonna be a community process, I think, in light of what was outlined, unless we wanted to delay that until like the September or whatever, but maybe we wanna get that money out sooner rather than later, if it's that we choose to do. So, I would be comfortable giving it a two-week, or, basically, a three-week continuance, and we're gonna load up either the 28th or the 1st of March, but, and then coming back with the expectation that we can either give direction, vote something up or down, or modify it here at the DICE. But, I, I would like to see us get to something in the next, next three weeks. So, that's my thoughts. Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Serna.
I just have one comment that I was remiss in saying. If we do go down the road that we're gonna have this, our preference will be to come to in January, to kind of give you a status update on how the money's-
Next year, right?
Next year, yeah. How thing, how the money's being used, what's the utilization? Did we use all the money? But, the other lesson, at least that I learned, actually sitting over here at that point, when we went through in nine and 10, was that this was the first money that we took out, and this was the most difficult piece that we went out. I was reminiscing with Phil, that when he was running, he was sitting up in the chambers, and we were arguing about World Trade Center. We were down to arguing about five hundred dollars.
Sixty-four hundred bucks is what I remember, something like that.
So, part of what I wanna build into this is the caution that I think Supervisor Frost has brought in, is that there are fiscal constraints we always have, but I would rather be in front of you in January, letting you know that we don't believe this funding's gonna work. So, whoever's gotten the grant, that they know upfront that this money is off the table, and we're not getting how we had to deal with it in June and September, nine and 10.
Okay.
Are you talking about January of next year, or?
Yeah, correct. Each year, if you have this program in place, each January, yes.
But, earlier, you were talking about this is a two-year grant program, maximum two years. So, we're setting them up for one renewal on the grant? Is that correct?
So, we had proposed that a portion of it could be for two years, but that's obviously something that we could look at if we come back, and maybe for this initial cycle, it would be limited to one year until we sort of see-
Actually, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. I understand the question. The initial grant could be up to two years. What I'm talking about January check-in, that money's been allocated. It's the future money coming in, if we need to take that money out and make adjustments, and not adjust the existing grants at that point.
So, and the other question I have that relates to, you made a comment, the max amount, fifty percent of the amount allocated that year, is the one million dollars divided by five districts, and each district gets their allocation? And then Supervisor Peters brought up the unincorporated versus the, the incorporated, and how do we rationalize that?
So, our tradition, and I'm just merely stating as tradition, I'm not, the way we were viewing this, the grants that the board gave back then were county-wide. So, anybody from the county could compete for it, and there was not any district allocation provided. So, that was our thought process going in, that if there's a need from City of Sacramento, unincorporated, Citrus Heights, wherever, they come through the process, and we will go through the granting the money. The reason why we ended up adding a hundred thousand for each supervisory district on the community service program was more of a nod towards that there are community needs that you all hear. And, at one point, I think you guys were down to twenty thousand each, so that's why we went to the hundred thousand to give you a little bit more flexibility.
At first, you went to fifty for a couple while.
We did, you're correct. We went to fifty. Then, we went to a hundred. So, that was our thought process, is that there, you have community money to take care of the community needs. This is more larger projects, if you will. We talked about the power center, trolley issues come up, and other examples are escaping me, but there's things that come up during the year. We're trying to put them in the process countywide, not in a district manner. If it's good for the whole county, and we believe, and the supervisors believe that's something we should do, that's what this is for.
So, I just want, I just wanna make sure Supervisor Frost understands that currently we do have, there is a pot of the TOT that is set aside, that is equally distributed, a hundred-and-twenty per supervisory district, as of the policy that was passed last year, or the, the budget action that was passed last year. What we're talking about is something, a different pot of the TOT, and it would be additive, but as Mr. Gill was saying, it would be for a longer period of time, two years versus just the one budgetary year.
Correct.
And, as is currently proposed, it would be county-wide, not just specific to a district.
Correct.
And that different pot is currently going to-
That's the million that we're talking about.
Yeah, but it's currently going to-
The general fund.
The general fund, right.
For the discretion of you, or the departments.
Yeah, and his recommendations, certainly.
Recommendations back to you.
It just goes into the big pot and gets-
So, we're proposing to take it out of the general fund and allocate it specifically to outside grants.
And the reason why we're here today to discuss that is that in the past, particularly in June, there was a desire that the board members had to see if there's any adjustment that could be made, but the money is basically locked in at that point, and we have to then take it out of pot A to balance B.
Yeah.
Today's purpose was, before we even get locked into any numbers, anything that's locked in my head, or Britt's head, is to have this dialogue with you, that if you're willing to do this, a million dollars, five hundred, whatever that number is, then we know going into the budget what our number is that we're starting off with, and we can start balancing the budget accordingly. So, that's the purpose of this discussion.
Okay. Sue, anything else?
Yeah, I guess I'm still struggling with it, 'cause I kinda like the idea of having discretionary in the budget at this time, but, okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, we're gonna, it's all right, come back.
We're gonna, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion so we can put a bow on this. So, I move that we, we continue this discussion with the direction that's, and suggestions that have been, and feedback that's been given already. Come back in two weeks, the 28th? I'm thinking the 28th versus the 1st, 'cause we had the other one moved to the 1st, right? Okay, so that, I'm just-
28th or the 1st?
Twenty-eighth.
Move this to the, move this discussion to the 28th. And I just wanted to add that I agree with Chair Natoli about not limiting ourselves just to the nonprofit world. I think, if you think about it, we actually have some tremendous opportunities, not just with the city of Sacramento, but with the other six cities, to match with them on certain initiatives, whether, you know, whether it be a Citrus Heights issue, or Folsom issue, Ranch Cordova issue, what have you. And so, we should think carefully about how we leave ourselves open an opportunity to, to do that, working with other local government, and school districts for that matter. So, anyhow, that's, that's my motion.
All right. Motion to continue. This is February 28th. What time?
Flo, can we work on the time? We have a lot of items on the 28th. We'll put it on 28th.
Is it better to put on the 1st? I mean, I just-
That's what we need to look. We have a lot of stuff that moved on us. 28th, we can make it work. It's just, I don't know, time at this point.
Okay.
Well, this was the 10:30 item. I got hurt at 4:30 today, so, we may get Britt and Troy a little narrow window on this, so.
We will.
Okay, all right, very good. So, the motion is continued to February 28th, and we'll get appropriate time. Thank you for your patience. Thanks, everybody, my colleagues, for everybody's input, and that is the motion. Please vote.
Can we get a second?
Oh, a second, okay. You did get a second, just before the vote got counted.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. We'll come back on that then. Okay, any other agenda business? We have an off-agenda speaker. I know we've got some adjournments and, and comments by supervisors and some reports, so.
You also have your own ranks.
I mean-
Yeah, that's item 50. And then, also, I want to point out to you, Mr. Chair, that for item 39, we spoke to the Assistant Probation Chief, and he would like to continue that to March 7th.
Okay.
That was the presentation.
Yeah, Paula shared that with me earlier. I asked about what had happened. I didn't see Marlon in the audience, so, okay. All right, so we'll reschedule that. So, let's go to item 50, appointments from our own ranks. And again, if there's a desire to do any of these, again, I know you've done some work around these, Flo, but I don't wanna take too long this afternoon, since it's pretty late, so.
And it's up to you, sir, if you want to continue this, 'cause we do communicate with you via the memorandums.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Chair Serna.
There is, I would, I would like the, the indulgence of the board on one particular own ranks appointment today. And that's after careful thought and some discussion with Supervisor Frost. I'd like us to reconsider, I think reconsider, I'm not sure we actually got to it or not, the SECOG appointments from this board. After discussing with Supervisor Frost her interest and the possibility of serving as one of three representatives to SECOG on the board, and my continued challenge, quite frankly, in being able to schedule my time for board meetings, and especially also the GRAPA committee meetings that, that go along with service on that board, I would like to nominate Sue Frost to serve on the SECOG board.
Second.
Okay, all right. So, move to second then to approve Sue Frost as one of our three appointees to the SECOG board, and thank you Supervisor Serna. So, Chester, you accept that, Ms. Frost? Okay.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
Okay, all right, let's vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Sue.
Looking at this list, it's got the tobacco securitization authority, and I thought-
There you go.
Supervisor Sauce, Frost had accepted those. Did I?
I did. I just had a question relating to an investment in tobacco and didn't wanna have a conflict of interest. So, if there was no conflict, I was happy to serve.
Okay, so, take those two off. It'll be Supervisor Frost.
Okay, got those cleared. There's some other ones you've referred here, and I don't know, and this-
Do we wanna just start from the top and just go down the memo?
Well, the county executive's gotta do some work on some of these, right?
Yes, sir.
So, are you ready to handle your items today?
Not today, sir.
Okay. Why don't we do this, is there any other urgency in light of the lateness of the hour? Let's, why don't we hold this to 28th?
Yes.
Or the 1st? You can decide, Flo. Or the 2nd?
Let's go to the 28th.
Okay, all right, let's do that. So, thanks for your work. I know you put it over last time, but again, I think we wanna hear-
We reduced it by some.
Yes, we did. We took care of two of them, so. All right, very good. So, with that, we'll hold the remaining portion of that report back until either the 28th of February or 1st of March. Okay, we do have an off-agenda speaker, and so, we'll, she's been very patient, so we'll hear from her, and then we've got a couple of-
One, one item on you.
Yeah, county exec comments and supervisor comments as well, so. All right, with that, Cindy Flaherty. And Cindy, under rules of board, we allow up to five minutes for off-agenda items. You've been very patient, so I'll yield the maximum to you, and if you can get it done before that, fine, but if not, we got a copy of your letter, and let you introduce yourself and go from there.
Good afternoon. I'm Cindy Flaherty, and I'm not gonna ask for money.
Okay.
I volunteered for the Bradshaw Animal Shelter for five years, and I've been the cat consultant for 15 months. I created the Cat Fay. In October of 2015, I was recognized for my many outstanding contributions, positive team spirit, and contagious enthusiasm by the animal shelter. Full disclosure, my contract as cat consultant was not renewed yesterday. I'm here today to ask your help to stop the inhumane treatment of cats at Bradshaw Animal Shelter, primarily those arising out of the return to field program. The return to field program for cats was created by the Corret Shelter Medicine Program at UC Davis. It's a fabulous program, and it calls for all stray, healthy cats to be spayed and neutered, microchipped, vaccinated, ear tipped, and returned to the location where they were found. Fourteen months ago, Bradshaw Shelter implemented this wonderful program. The criteria included the agreement not to return to field kittens or infirm cats. The complete cats, a list of cats that do not qualify for the RTF program is represented by the acronym CAToid QKS. Please refer to your handout for more details. Bradshaw Shelter Management agreed with this criteria and supported its implementation. It's posted at intake for staff reference. I was hired to specifically administer the program. I'm sad to report to you that there has not been consistent compliance with the program. Two recent examples. This is, this is Olivia. On December 24th, two-month-old Olivia was featured in a Bradshaw Shelter Facebook post. Two days later, Olivia was unexpectedly RTF-ed in 30-degree weather by a reluctant animal control officer. This RTF was ordered by Bradshaw Shelter kennel supervisor Eileen Matson. This is not humane treatment. On the other side, on December 17th, 2016, Charles, a cat with a bloodied injured eye, was brought to the shelter by the animal control field officer. He was neutered, and his eye was removed. Charles was returned to field on January 1st, 2017, while he was still recovering from his injuries, to a location that kennel supervisor Danielle Russell had previously identified as a do-not-return location due to the large number of feral cats and the unsafe conditions. Charles should not have been RTF-ed. He was infirm. He was still recovering from his injuries and adjusting to an existence as a one-eyed cat. He was returned to a location the shelter previously identified to be unsafe. There was plenty of shelter space for cats at the shelter. This unexpected RTF was also ordered by kennel supervisor Eileen Matson. This is not humane treatment. Both of these cats were returned to field by animal control field officers. Animal control officers are unable to respond to all of the requests from the community. Sixty percent of all RTF cats are returned to field by the person who brought the cat to the shelter. We have a vibrant RTF program that provides for volunteers to return the balance. Using animal control officers to return to field cats is a misuse of county resources, and it might be illegal. Seeking, this is wrong, and it needs to stop. Seeking help, I met with shelter director Dave Dickinson in August, October, December, and yesterday. Nothing changed. On three occasions in January, I elevated the matter to Rob Leonard, NAVGIL, and Don Natoli. Am I disappointed? Absolutely. I know Bradshaw Shelter can be better than this. Unless this matter is addressed, potentially more cats are gonna suffer the inhumane treatment as ordered by animal control, by animal kennel supervisor Eileen Matson, and sanctioned by shelter director Dave Dickinson. Please stop the inhumane treatment of cats and misuse of county's resources at Bradshaw Animal Shelter. Thank you for your time. What questions do you have?
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. I don't know if there are any questions by board members. Don't see any questions. Certainly received this information, and we'll make sure that, I think NAV and Rob got copies of this as well, so we'll, so noted, certainly noted your correspondence, and I certainly have been in conversation- your correspondence, and I certainly have been in conversations with the staff when they received their correspondence. And I thank you for your call to my office. You did let us know you'd be here off agenda, so didn't, couldn't predict it was going to be quite this long, Dave, but appreciate the effort and certainly your concern for the cats that you've outlined, as well as the other ones that you cared for, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay. That's our off agenda item. I had no one else sign to speak on off agenda items. We can't take any action on those items today. So, with that, then, I think we had some follow-on items.
Just have one item. If I could indulge the board, last couple of weeks, we've done a lot of work with homeless folks on the street, some of the stuff that Supervisor Serna has asked us to look into. And I thought it would be appropriate to have Ann Edwards just give you a very quick update on what kind of work we have done in sheltering folks during the storm. So, Ann, if you could, if you could make a quick presentation.
Good evening, Ann.
Ann Edwards, Department of Human Assistance. Thank you. We've been working really hard over the last several weeks to open warming centers, and we've opened two so far. One at the Stanford Settlement. That facility is being staffed by staff from Volunteers of America, and they're providing staff, transportation, food, and DHA is providing blankets and security and background checks to make sure that we don't have any 290 registrants or anyone with a felony warrant that's sleeping there. That has a capacity to serve 25 men or women on any given night. There have been many nights when they've been full, some nights when they have not. We also recently opened up a county vacated facility over on North A Street, and that opened on February 2nd. It's currently open now, scheduled to be open every night until the 10th, and that has a capacity to serve 46 men and women. It has yet to reach full capacity, but it got pretty close last night, I believe. Salvation Army is providing staffing support for that facility. We got cots. Phil helped us get cots.
Yeah. Literally, I went and picked up cots.
Yes. And DHA, again, is providing blankets and security and background checks.
Actually, the thanks goes to Supervisor Frost for the cots. I went and picked them up, but she's the person that put me in contact with the right folks involved with the annual stand-down event.
Yes.
Yes. It was the veterans.
Yeah. The veterans stepped up big time, so thanks to them.
I can send you a picture of the cots.
The 50 cots. I've seen them set up in the, in that space.
So, both shelters are scheduled to be open through the remainder of this week, because we're anticipating rain every week. And then, after that, we, excuse me, every day. Thank you. After that, we assess...
Yeah, but you got it right both ways. About every week has been raining, too.
And raining a lot, yes. So, we're just assessing based on temperature and volume of rain. Happy to answer any questions.
Phil.
Yeah. Just a hearty thank you, especially to you and Eduardo for really taking a large chunk out of your days and even evenings to make sure that this is running as smoothly as we can expect. I don't know if we have a total count or running total, but it would be good, I think, certainly by the end of the season, to kind of look back and understand how many people, men and women, we were...
I have the numbers to date, if you're interested.
Yes, I'd love to hear that.
So, at Stanford Settlement, we've served a total of 394 individuals, but only 19 unduplicated. So, there's a lot of repeat customers there. And at North A, we've served a total of 95, and 53 are unduplicated.
Okay. Well, I think that speaks to the fact that there is, there's need out there. And, you know, I suffered myself the first night of operations at Stanford Settlement a couple of weeks ago, and the folks that were there were obviously very exhausted. They had lights out. The women had lights out before I got there at 6 o'clock. And the VOA staff person there was explaining that they were coming in just, you know, really beat from the exposure to the weather and just ready, quite frankly, to go to sleep. So, I don't know if that's what folks are seeing over at 1400 North A, but I do want to also, I'd be very remiss if I didn't extend a very sincere thank you to the River District, especially Patty Klein Connect, if you're watching, and some of her more outspoken, and understandably so, outspoken members concerned about overconcentration in the district. We had some, I think, very, at times, emotional conversation last week about the prospect of opening up the North A Warming Center. But the intent here is to actually achieve a few things, not the least of which is actually trying our best to serve the people that are already in the River District. And that's why we're using Salvation Army, because they're located literally down the street on North B. But we're also taking some of the resources that came from private contributions to help the River District with augmenting some of their needs in terms of added security and street pickup and cleanup over the coming weeks. I think the best we can hope for is that we can look back on this and know that we actually sheltered people when they needed it most. And at the same time, if you want to call it a model or a pilot, that's fine, but also simultaneously, we tried to respond affirmatively to the needs that have been expressed time and time again by the River District, and that is that they need to see some real change there. And I couldn't agree more. So, we're doing our best. Thanks to Ann, and Paul, and Nav, and Nancy, and everyone that has been responsible for really being very responsive when asked to be. So, thanks to everyone.
Good. Thank you, Phil. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to give a shout out for the food bank in Rio Linda. I don't know if the county has any facilities in that area, or if you know of anyone that might, a faith-based group that might be able to help. But the Southern Baptist Church there has sold, and they're going to be building a Rite Aid. And so, the food bank has 20 homeless individuals that they shelter every night, and they have the staff, and they have the business model all set up. They've got the food. All they need is a new location to, they need a new location within four months. They have to be gone within four months. So, within three months, they need a new location to lay their heads, and it's a temporary location, because the Southern Baptist, my understanding is that the church is going to be helping them financially to identify a place of their own. It's just a temporary location. So, I just thought I'd just put that out there in case you know of something, or you know someone who knows.
We can follow up.
Okay. I just, again, thank all of my colleagues for their efforts, respectively, in, you know, different realms. But certainly acknowledge, too, that Supervisor Serna has kind of lived this thing for the last few weeks, and I know has pulled a lot of folks along with him, and I think done good work, and can provide great leadership. Appreciate that. Certainly the donation of the cots, and I think contribution of time and effort, Ann, you and your staff. And I know I hear great things about many of them, certainly you mentioned some of them by name, but all of them who are certainly not just responding to requests by board members to do more, but to, and compliment, obviously, by things that actually help us do more, raising money and arranging and so forth. But I think just, you know, recognizing the tremendous, you know, human need out there, and, you know, doing what we can to address at least some of that. And again, the numbers that you recalled, you know, just a moment ago, that wouldn't have been possible. Those folks may or may not have been housed, but, you know, with winter shelter being pretty much subscribed on any given evening, and the ability to accommodate both at Stanford Settlement and at the North A Street facility now in the last few days makes a difference. And I guess I would just offer in addition to thanks, though, and say to Nav, that I don't know what amount of funding is still available, but the winter cycle continues as it is, and we continue to have a need. I know there's been private money that's been raised by colleagues on this board, in addition to obviously some county funding. But, you know, we have sites that are located, that are providing some shelter for folks, and hopefully we'll continue to do that in a way that, you know, sees them, you know, being utilized fully, or at least close to it. So, I guess I would just suggest that in addition to winter shelter funding and some of the things we've done, that, you know, if we need to find some additional funding on the public side of this, that you keep us informed of that. I mean, I guess it was $50,000 raised for this effort? There was some...
Well, a total of 110.
110. And we put some in, and the SRA put some in.
Yeah. That includes 50 from the county and the city.
Okay. So, anyway, it's been all about money today and doing good things. But anyway, thanks, Ann, and appreciate that certainly conveyed to your colleagues and all those folks that, you know, your support.
Well, and I appreciate the thanks. And I know Supervisor Serna mentioned some names, but this could not have happened without Eduardo Amanero, Julie Field, Megan Marshall, Susan Lau, and Victor Contreras.
Thank you.
They have been working on this nonstop.
So, we got money left over. Let's get some medals, or at least give them a...
Yeah. I hope they're watching, because they've been working really, really hard.
Yeah. No, thank them so much. Appreciate all their efforts. So, okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Gill? All right. Board members, I know we've got some adjournments, so let's take the announcements first, and then we'll go to the adjournments. So, announcements? All right. Not then adjournments. I know Ms. Frost, I have one as well, so.
So, this evening, I would like to close the meeting in memory of a good friend, Ken Umbach from Citrus Heights. He was a special part of our community. Ken passed away on December 19, 2016, at the age of 69 years. Loving husband of Rosa Umbach, cherished father of Brian, Jamie, Amy, Rick, James, Dionne, and Brian, and Autumn, grandfather of Katie and Camille, Justin, Julianne, Kyle, Devon, Bella, and Brooklyn, brother of David, Maude Umbach, and the late Peggy Clopine Inkerman, son of the late William and Virginia Umbach. Ken graduated from Redlands High School in 1965 and earned a PhD in government from Claremont Graduate School in '74. He moved to Sacramento in 1974 and began a long career in policy analysis and research with the state of California. He retired from the state in 2003, but continued his lifelong love of research and writing through his business, Umbach Consulting and Publishing, where he helped many aspiring writers turn their ideas into books. He also wrote Ken's Corner, a well-regarded weekly column published in the Senior Spectrum newspaper. He enjoyed writing his articles about life, family, and interactions with others. His quirky sense of humor shined through to everyone he met. Some of his previous experience included California Research Bureau, California State Library, where he wrote publications, Defense-Based Conversion, Agriculture in Mexico, The Internet and Its Policy Implications, Mountain Lions in California, Ferrets in California Policy Issue, California's Great Central Valley, Push Technology, Africanized Honeybees, Computer Technology in K-12 Schools, Impacts of Computer Technology on Learning in K-12 Schools, and Inquiry, and Other Projects. He was research analyst at the State of California Department of Development Services, senior consultant at the State of California State Senate, analyst for California Department of Developmental Services, Office of Planning and Policy Development, analyst for California Office and statewide health planning and development, outside thesis reader for the University of Redlands Institute of Professional Development. Ken and Rosa were happily married for over 34 years. In his youth, Ken traveled with his family to Austria and Central Europe. Over the years, Ken and Rosa traveled to the East Coast and visited their son Brian and many of their friends. Ken enjoyed traveling with his wife and children, going to exotic places like Puerto Rico and the Caribbean and Hawaii. In October 2015, Ken participated in a high school reunion cruise with many friends from Redlands. The times he spent with his lovely wife Rosa in the Pacific Grove, where he most cherished moments returning to multiple, where his most cherished moments were returning multiple times yearly. Ken was an avid reader on diverse subjects, sharing love of mystery and science fiction novels with his wife Rosa. During his past few years, Ken became a wine enthusiast. He and Rosa enjoyed sampling domestic and international wines. Ken's most enjoyed, Ken most enjoyed spending time with Rosa, and was always up for an adventure with his children and grandchildren. Ken was a good friend, and I could always count on Ken to be one of those people that was honest and straightforward and supportive. And Ken, may you rest in peace. And Rosa and family, may you be comforted by your fond memories of your life with Ken. He'll live on in our hearts, and the community in Citrus Heights loved Ken, and we'll all miss him.
Well, thank you, Sue. And we will adjourn in a moment in memory of Ken Umbach. I would also like to have us likewise adjourn in honor of Mary Hall Lewis, Mary Lewis. And unlike Ken, had a good part of her life devoted to writing. She and her husband Roy Herberger, first husband Roy Herberger, moved to the Galt and Elk Grove community when they purchased the Elk Grove Citizen Galt Herald in 1959. And for the following 58 years, she had a nonstop career, not only of community involvement, but of, you know, regular basis, a weekly basis of reporting on the goings-on, both in the Elk Grove and Galt communities, but the adjoining areas in South Sacramento County. She was born in 1932 in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, grew up in nearby Riverton, attended Moorestown Friends School, graduated 1949, and attended Christian College in Columbus, Missouri, before she transferred to the University of Missouri, where she earned a degree in journalism in 1953. Mary was very active in the Elk Grove community. She was honored as the Elk Grove Citizen of the Year in 2010, many service awards, and served in many capacities, everything from her church, United Methodist Church, to the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce, to the Seroptimists, and Strauss Festival of Elk Grove. She was very active in the Historical Society and many other goings-on, and could always be seen in support of events and of the people in the community about what she was a part of, but she wrote about it. And some of her columns, again, kind of hearken back to days of old, but she wrote about a column about town, a glance back, which would go back in 15 or 20-year increments to talk about what happened, you know, that week in, you know, in 1937, 1957, and so forth. Wrote the church news and class notes, and was wed in 1983 to Dr. Arnold Lewis, who was a former pastor to the Galt United Methodist Church. They enjoyed many travels together, and he preceded her in death in 2012. She survived her daughter Elizabeth Schwartz of San Jose, son David Herberger, who continues the publication and the weekly, both the Galt and Elk Grove publications, and also nieces, nephews, and grandchildren. So, want to wish her family, the Herberger family, again, longtime institution in this community, our best, and certainly the Lewis family as well. And there'll be a celebration of her life this Friday in Elk Grove, which I'm sure will be well-attended, to recognize and memorialize her contributions to the community. So, she was a very good friend, certainly to me and to my family, and I know we'll miss her greatly. Just last night, I would say, I saw her last at the Elk Grove Chamber Annual Dinner, a few weeks, actually about a week and a half before she passed. And she was there, even though not feeling well, but they were certainly in good spirits and bringing, you know, that kind of effort to the whole outing that we could all appreciate, because it was typical Mary. She was there irrespective of how she felt physically. And so, again, we wish her well, and her family well, and spare her memories. And so, with that, we would adjourn, unless there's any others, in memory of Ken Umbach and Mary Hall Lewis, as we close at 6:05 today.